I called to order the work session of the Willson City Council of October 20th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I will start by asking council members for review of the agenda as amended or supplemented and items on consent. Are there any comments? Are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session? Turning now to our work session, the first thing we have up is housing statutory compliance.
I'm Kim Reibold, Senior Planner, and tonight I'm going to introduce the first part of the Housing Statutory Compliance Project. This is a project, this first part, well, both parts actually, but that will focus on some legislative changes that happened during the 2025 state legislative session and how those affect the city's development code. So tonight, we hope to get out of this work session an explanation of what the purpose of this project is so that we understand what we'll be doing over the next several months. And to help with that, I'll be providing a quick overview of the city's current land use review process for residential development. I will then talk about what we'll be looking at with this part of the project in terms of work products and the timeline for our work, and then get some initial input from you all on information that you would find to be helpful as we move forward with these development code updates. So if you recall, earlier this year, the city council adopted the city's housing production strategy. This is a document that included several actions that the city would pursue over the next six years to help ensure that housing needs in the city that have been identified are being actively worked towards. One of these actions was Action C, which was an evaluation of looking at administrative land use review process for residential development. And so the housing production strategy recommended that the city begin this work around 2027 and have it in place by 2029. However, as we were finalizing that plan, the legislature was wrapping up its session, and one of the bills that came out of the session was Senate Bill 974, which among a few other things requires cities to review certain residential land use applications through an administrative land use process, so essentially having an initial decision made on those applications without holding a public hearing. And our compliance with those requirements, the date for that is July 1st, 2026. So that accelerated when we would start looking at Action C. And so what we hope to do with this project is take a look at what was in the housing production strategy around looking at administrative review, compare that with the requirements that are in the state legislation, and try to balance these things in a way that still enables the city of Wilsonville to have a customer service friendly land use review process for residential development. And importantly, based on the input that we heard from you as we developed the housing production strategy, we know that it's really important to maintain public access to the process, to also maintain transparency with that land use review process. And so we really hope during this phase of the work to be balancing those things to come out with an end product that makes sense for the city of Wilsonville. So quickly, I'll highlight the three different main types of land use review processes for development applications in the city of Wilsonville. They range both in level of complexity as well as who reviews and approves and what type of public notice we have. The first category is what we call our Class 1 Administrative Review Process. These are decisions issued by the planning director or designee with no public notice. And in this case, a Class 1 decision is only appealable by the applicant. The public does not have appeal rights on those decisions unless they move forward through the process. These are typically land use reviews that determine the compliance of something with another previous land use approval. These are not the types of decisions that require any discretion on the part of the planning director to make the decision. Next is the Class 2 Administrative Review Process. This is an administrative review that while the decision is made by the planning director, there is a public notice period and an opportunity to provide public comment. These are typically decisions that have maybe some limited discretion to them, so you're still looking at a clear and objective standard in the code, but there might be, you know, decision points for how those standards can be met. And so we would make findings to demonstrate how, what was the subject of the application meets the development code. These are decisions that can be either appealed to or called up by the Development Review Board for a hearing. So these are typically things that you're looking for meeting clear and objective standards. These are often minor modifications to development plans, things that are a little more than just ministerial decisions. And then lastly, we have our Class 3 quasi judicial review process. This is a review process where our Development Review Board is the decision maker. They serve in a role as a judge in terms of making, reviewing the materials before them, reviewing any public comment, public testimony, and issuing a decision based on the facts of the application. And so when it comes to residential land use applications, we are required to use clear and objective standards. So in this case, the DRB would be serving in a role of verifying compliance with those clear and objective standards. There is also a waiver process the city has that is more discretionary, and the DRB makes decisions on those as well. So these applications can either be appealed to or called up by the city council for a final local decision. There is one exception to this framework, and this is in the Coffee Creek industrial area on the northwest side of town. Back in 2018, the city adopted a new code for this area that was form-based in nature. And so what that means is that all of the development standards for design, for site layout were done in a clear and objective manner. So specific numerical standards that regulated where buildings could be placed, how they would look, with the intention of having a more predictable process for review of development applications in this area. And so through that amendment to the development code, the city enabled a Class 2 Administrative Review Process for new development in this area that met the clear and objective standards of that code. Applications that have waiver requests to any of those standards were still reviewed and approved by DRB. And so this, in terms of looking at how the city could approach changes to the residential development review process, the Coffee Creek area does provide us with a possible framework. So I want to give you a little more background on how Wilsonville reviews land use more generally and what changes to the city's process could mean for the existing DRB. So unlike some other cities in Oregon who have just a planning commission that reviews both legislative, which are policy-based land use actions, and quasi judicial actions, the city has had a history of splitting those into different roles for the DRB and the planning commission. And so really, the DRB is focused on those quasi judicial land use applications, whereas the planning commission, they look at policies like the development code itself. So since the late 1990s, the city has had two DRB panels, DRBA and DRBB. Really, the only difference between those panels is one meets the second Monday of the month and the other one meets the fourth Monday of the month. This was done to maintain scheduling flexibility since some development applications are under a tighter review timeline, and also done to just manage the workload that the city had at the time. And so over the years, the frequency of these meetings has varied, and this can be based on the time of year. So, you know, applications in the fall in preparation for spring construction season, but also from year to year based on where we're seeing a lot of growth activity in the city, or based on economic factors that might be affecting development more broadly. So a quick review of applications that we've had that have either been reviewed by the DRB since 2020. Applications that were solely for new residential development comprised approximately 24% of the overall volume of DRB applications. So the DRB reviews a number of things like certain sign waivers, temporary use permits, development applications for commercial, residential, or commercial, industrial, and residential development. And so if we were making changes, you know, it looks like it impacts maybe about a quarter of the overall workload based on our current code process. Another issue that came up when we were discussing the housing production strategy was public notice and just, you know, understanding what our current practices are and how that might influence any changes moving forward. There are some differences between the DRB public hearing process and the Class 2 Administrative Review Process currently. In both cases, property owners within 250 feet of an application site receive mailed notice about the proposed application. The difference being that the DRB notice, you can either submit written comments or attend the meeting to provide testimony, whereas the Class 2 process is more of a written testimony only for the record. In the case of the DRB hearings, we currently do a site posting that has a little packet of information that is also what is in the mailed notice. We do publish a staff report with the development exhibits on the city website one week prior to the hearing, whereas the Class 2 applications we review do not typically get posted to the city website. In both cases, there is a notice of decision that is transmitted to either the city council in the case of DRB hearings, or the DRB in the case of Class 2 reviews. And I would note that some of what we have to grapple with in terms of dealing with the statutory language that was adopted last year is that there are some different notice radiuses that actually shrunk a little bit. So one of the things we will have to look at is how to clearly rectify those differences between current process, which is driven by state requirements, and new process, which is also driven by different state requirements.
Can I ask you a question at this point? What is the difference, if any, on any sort of appeal of a decision? And how does that process work under both?
Sure.
And if I've interrupted, then you're going to tell me later.
No, it's okay. So I will say that in terms of the statutory requirements that we're assessing, there is some language around appeals. We haven't fully analyzed it yet, so that could drive some changes. Currently, you, part of getting sort of appeal rights is providing comment to have standing in the matter. And so in both processes, we currently have, providing that comment does give you standing. So what's the difference kind of here right now in the current process is that if somebody appeals a Class 2 decision, that goes to the DRB. Then that DRB decision could in theory be appealed to city council as well. Whereas at a DRB hearing, if you provide testimony, whether oral or written, you know, raising, sufficiently raising the issues that you would base your appeal upon, you then have standing as well. And so that decision in the case of a DRB hearing would be appealed to city council directly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as next steps in this process, we're putting together a memo to really kind of dig down more into what the statute requires, working in coordination with 3J Consulting, consulting, land use consulting team here in Oregon, as well as working with our legal staff to evaluate our reading of the statute versus guidance that's been put out by the state about how they believe the statute applies. A lot of, because there is not a state rulemaking process associated with this particular bill, a lot of the advice that we've been given is consult your attorney. So we'll be doing that. And what we really want to have a sense of is, you know, we have this policy document, the housing production strategy, that said, hey, look at this process. We have some things we know we have to change, and so we want to have an understanding of what's actually required versus what just makes sense to do, and let's try to marry those two things together. So what we hope to do in this memo is break that down a little more and then provide you with some options for implementation. So there's going to be certain things we don't really have a good choice on, that we kind of just have to do what statute tells us to do, but there might be other things where we do have some decision points. And so our hope would be to pull those out so that we can discuss that. We would then also identify the affected development code sections. We do have some sections about appeals that we know are going to need to be updated. We have sections just about process in general. And so there's probably some significant code work there, but we want to be able to talk about, you know, what you all believe is the best way to go about approaching these updates before we actually do the code edits. And so another piece about that that's really important is the public outreach component. You know, obviously, when it comes to statute, that's already been adopted. There's not necessarily a lot of influence we can have there, but we certainly, because it is a change in practice, we'd want to inform the community of these process changes. But also, you know, I remember hearing as we worked on this in the HPS that, you know, maybe we can do some updated different things, that if there's not a hearing, you know, how else do we publicize information so that people can participate? Because I think it's important to note here that we're not trying to take away the ability for people to participate. It's really just conforming to the requirements that the state statute says, while making sure we're still providing people an opportunity to preserve any appeal rights they have or just provide input. And so we're working with DLCD. They have given us a grant for this work. As we work on the grant agreement, I think we'll kind of define a little more what this public outreach will look like during this process. But just to give you an overall sense of the project's schedule, we do have to move somewhat aggressively to meet that July 1st, 2026 deadline. So we will be coming back to you in December with this memo, as well as a report out of what we talked about with the planning commission about the memos, while we anticipate that any project outreach is going to be happening in early 2026, you know, before we finalize the draft code amendments, with those coming back in draft form in March, planning commission hearing in April, council hearing in May, so that they are effective on July 1. And so with that, we thought this might be a good opportunity to get some initial feedback from you, just based on the information we have about the current process and what we know. So focused on any types of community input you would find valuable as you do this work, any modifications that you would want us to think about, if any, or maybe not, but to the current land use review structure with our boards that we have, as well as, you know, just if you more broadly have questions you would want us to take a look at with our consultant team, either for, you know, in the memo or just more broadly. So with that, I will leave these questions up here, but I can also take any questions as well. Thank you.
Counselor Shavlon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Reibold, for today's presentation. I imagine that I'll probably have more questions as we move through the process, but just a statement and then a question. Thank you for your efforts, you and your team on wanting to make sure that you maintain the, your customer service approach and your transparency as you move through this process and adopt the new legislature, legislation. And I do appreciate our legislators wanting to move housing production along more quickly statewide, although from my understanding, we have, we, meaning the city of Wilsonville, have a pretty good process already, but, you know, we still need to be in compliance. My question is, and I guess it perhaps has to do with the first bullet point on the questions is developers. How do you, do you anticipate hearing from developers? And how would this process perhaps impact them in either a positive or a negative way?
That's a good question. As we often do when we have development code updates, you know, we've got, we've got a list of development teams that we've worked with over the years that have been doing work in Wilsonville. And so I do think that's a good point. That's one constituency we'd want to hear from as we shape our process here. You know, typically, you know, I don't know that I could say fully how this will impact them in every facet. What we have heard over the years is that predictability is a big thing they're interested in. So this is where clear and objective standards come into play a lot. We've heard that a lot over the years. They want to know what they can do, where they can do it, and have a sense that that will be approved. And so I think, you know, from that perspective, this adds to that certainty a little bit, just knowing that the process is, you know, if it's an administrative review, it's a quicker timeframe. It removes what they perceive as uncertainty from having to go through a hearing when they're adhering to clear and objective standards. And we did hear that a little bit too when we did the Coffee Creek process back in 2018. That was one of the reasons we looked at that. There is a little bit of time savings, although it's, I wouldn't argue that it's all that substantial in the overall development process.
And it's probably because you already have a pretty sound process, I would guess. But again, I appreciate the legislators wanting to move things along in perhaps cities that might be a little bit further behind in their process. But I appreciate the good work you and your team are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor President Berry.
Yeah, thank you for your report. As always, I always feel like you're really organized and well thought out in planning, and I appreciate how you mapped out what the coming schedule is. It might be worthwhile for the best input is to go directly to the boards, the DRB boards and the planning commission, and then maybe applicants that had similar applications to what we're talking about from maybe the last year and a half to get their insights. But I think you're on track, and I appreciate all the work that's going forward with this.
Thank you.
I'll just say that Counsel President Berry stole my thunder. Being on DRB, I would really love to have the ability to provide input when I was, so I agree with that. Counsel Cunningham.
Thank you for the work on this so far, Kim. Sounds like we're, you know, we have to abide by this, and so we'll go down that path. But I would like to thank Senator Courtney Neron-Mislin for being the sole no vote on this piece of legislation, because I once again disagree with the erosion of home rule and the ability of our own city to govern ourselves. We have a good process in place. We go above and beyond with two DRB, two DRB boards, and it's unfortunate that we continue to have these things pushed down on us as a community statewide solutions to problems that they see. So again, thank you to Senator Neron-Mislin.
I agree. Any other comments? Do you have the input you need?
Yeah, I mean, and I think some of these we can certainly follow up on when you have more information on our next work session as well. So, you know, certainly think about it. We'll talk about it more in December.
I would love to have the DRB boards' input.
And I think we've scoped that, because we actually, we did work sessions when we did the Coffee Creek. That was really helpful perspective to have in terms of the people who sit around the dais and review the work. And so I hope that we can make something of that happen again this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Parks Projects Update.
Chris Hammerman, Parks and Recreation Director. Before I jump into my presentation, I thought I'd mention a couple of weeks ago is that Oregon Recreation and Park Association's annual conference, and our team was recognized with a, the private sector partner award with the work that we did with the private sector partner, which was, and I'm blanking on his name, but in his work with expanding the disc golf in Memorial Park. So it was nice to be recognized. Once again, that's actually our second year in a row winning that particular award at that conference, so I just thought I would share that bit of good news and recognition. Tonight, for this presentation, a reminder that this is part two of kind of a three-part series of me coming before you at a work session to talk about and support the current existing goal, council goal of maintaining existing park maintenance levels of service through future expansion. And so tonight, so last month in September, we talked about and did a deep dive with Matrix Consulting into the staffing and operations side of things. Tonight, we're going to talk about the park acreage growth, what's coming online in the next few years, and then also look at some aging infrastructure. And then next month, we'll come back with FCS Group, a financial analyst, to talk about potential funding sources for long-term sustainability, so. So before we look at what is going to grow and what our aging infrastructure looks like, let's take a snapshot of our current system. So staffing levels and acreage. We currently have 293 acres of developed parks, which equals 19 parks managed. We have 13.13 full-time equivalents in the park maintenance and operations division, and that equates to about 22.3 acres maintained per FTE. And just as a reminder from the staffing assessment, a industry best practice is right around 12 acres per FTE. So we're a little bit on the low end as far as the industry standard. And this is just a kind of a map looking at our current, in the dark green is our current park properties, and then the highlighted portions are the new properties coming online, their location and their names. We have, on the west side of the map, we have Cavala Park, Alonka Park, and Tivoli Park, and those are the final three regional parks in the string of parks in the Villeboise system. And then now we're kind of turning our attention over to the east side of town with development in Frog Pond Park with the neighborhood park, the Trailhead Park, and then the Beckman Creek Interceptor Trail, which will be a nice improvement to connectivity on that side of town, connecting the Frog Pond area all the way down to Memorial Park. And so with those properties on the Villeboise side, we're looking at those three additional properties would combine about 14 additional acres. These are, these are parks that were community planned and brought about by These are, these are parks that were community planned and brought about by, uh, development agreements. So these, these are parks that are coming into our inventory. There's, there's no option on that. It's, they, they will be coming into our inventory. Just a little bit of background on that, they are currently open to the public and they have been since 2003, but they're, um, owned and managed at this point by HOAs. But once they were completed and opened to the public, a five clock, a five-year clock began. And at, at the end of that five years, those properties will be turned over to the city for ongoing maintenance and operations, which will be in 2028. And then the other properties on the east side of town, the Frog Pond West Neighborhood Park, it just began construction and I, I don't have pictures of that. So that's on the far right, that's the, uh, final design and that's what's being built there currently. It is, um, currently under construction. It broke ground about a month ago and, and things are going really well and the weather has been very helpful in moving that project along. Um, and then the other two properties, the Trailhead Park, again, it is, it is finished and open to the public, but it is HOA managed at this point. And in two years, it'll be turned over to us. And then the Beckman Creek Intercepter Trail, because it's a, it's not a park, you know, proper, but it's a trail and any, uh, trail and, uh, adjacent natural area would be managed by our, in our Parks Department. So all of those would add additional 11.27 acres to the system. And again, just that map, it a little, little bit, uh, zoomed in a little bit and then totaling the two, the west side and the east side would add approximately 26 additional acres to our current system. Now I'm gonna turn our attention to existing park amenities, but, um, you know, city of Wilsonville's been fortunate. We're a fairly young city. We have nice things, um, but those things don't last forever. And replacing old amenities in today's dollars is very costly. So just a, a few things and a few snapshots here of existing, uh, infrastructure and the need for replacing them or repairing them completely. The community center is in need of new siding. That's about $250,000 project. The Forest Shelter, uh, had some failing posts and so it's, it, it needs probably a hundred thousand dollars of repairs. The shelter on the far right, it has, has been replaced already and will eventually take that down. But, um, just, you know, things in parks that the community enjoys, um, they, they're great to have, but they don't last forever. So just, just pointing out the, the fact that these things are costly to replace when the time comes. A, a couple, um, recent replacement projects, so those, on the left, you have Sophia Park Playground, uh, which was done a couple of years ago. And on the right, we have, um, the Trailhead Maryfield that was just, uh, improved, um, I think last year it was completed. That project, uh, was about a hundred and fifty thousand, half of which was grant funded. So in summary, over the next few years, we're gonna be taking on more acreage and some of the, um, infrastructure that we do have, you know, is costly as we look, uh, towards replacing it. So next month, I'll be back to talk about, you know, a sustainable funding plan for the future, given, given the needs of the park, both on the staffing side and the, and the amenity side. And, uh, and then with that, I'll, I'll see if we can discuss, ask, answer any questions you may have. This is a picture of the Boone's Ferry All-Inclusive Playground, which was completed, uh, last year about this time. It's about a one-year anniversary on that. So, um, yeah, with that, I'll just open it up to discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Shavlin.
Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. My question has to do with, um, the fact that we're, um, a bit under, on the low end, as you said, with the industry standard of FTE, acre per FTE currently. Are you having to make, um, decisions about, uh, scheduling and workload based on that? Or how is your crew able to handle the current situation?
I mean, I currently, we're maintaining, but I think what's what we're trying to do is get a, uh, get ahead of and be proactive about as, as things are added to the system and as we have things aging and need replacing, how do we, how do we fund those and how do we address this goal of maintaining what we have through this expansion?
So you're able to heap up now? That's my basic question.
I mean, yeah, to our current standard, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good work. And congratulations on your, uh, award that you just received.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any further comments? Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. So one of the things that, that is, you know, stands out to me, and it'll be interesting as we get to the funding piece of this, you know, we're, we're taking on all these parks from, from HOA payrolls. Um, I think a lot of us who pay HOAs, you know, there's a park in my neighborhood. It's, it's not city-owned. Um, I would love to have a lower HOA and not have to pay for the maintenance on that park. Um, but, you know, I guess that's not the deal that I got. Um, and, and so it's something that, you know, the cat's out of the bag on these ones in Villeboise. Those are, those are, there's an agreement in place. I think it's important that going forward, um, as, as a council, as, as we're making decisions on some of these developments, that we're keenly aware of what, what it's gonna mean when we have these parks in these developments and whether or not we're taking them on. And what that means for our, our future residents, our current residents, and what we have to pay for and how we have to get that done. I'm sure we're, I'm sure the, the funding meeting is not gonna be real fun as, as we're, um, you know, tonight talking about increasing waste fees. Coming up, we'll be talking about the sewer and stormwater rate increases of up to 3X over the next 10 years. Um, and I'm sure that, um, this next one's gonna be talking about more things. And I know things are more expensive and all that, but, you know, for me, I think, um, we do have to have that focus on, in the future, uh, making these agreements and, and taking on these, these parks that the rest of the community's gonna have to pay for. So just, just a idea and, and something to keep in mind as we go forward.
Council President Berry.
Uh, thank you for the report. So I just need a little clarification, um, backtracking a bit. The city of Wilsonville is, uh, I think, a really special, uh, place because we do have so many trees and so many parks. But the point of clarification that I would like is that some of the parks are owned by the city and some of the parks within the city are, um, maintained by the HOAs. So, and you mentioned in your report tonight that, uh, the ones that we're looking at now to transferring from the HOA over to the city maintenance is already open up to the public? But is that the case, like, for all the parks where the HOAs are maintaining, uh, the park? Are, are those parks all open to the city too? Like, how does a citizen, a resident, or maybe somebody who works within the city know if a park is open for the public?
Okay, so is that kind of a two-part question? I believe they are open to the public. I don't think the HOAs can, at least to my knowledge, make their, it's a public space, so it, it's open to the public, it's not private. Um, that would be a different category of, of park. It wouldn't be a park. So they're public parks. And then as far as how you find out how it's maintained, I mean, you could always, if there's questions, citizens can, and we do get these questions from time to time. They call our office and, and ask. Usually it's not though, if just a park user wants to just go and enjoy a park, if they wanna do that, they just do that. But it usually comes down to if there's a maintenance question or, you know, they see something and they, they might call us and think, oh, Wilsonville Parks and Rec needs to fix this or, or address this. And if it's not our park, we won't do that, but we will pass them along to the HOA that manages that park. Did I answer your question?
I, I think, I think-
Thanks, though. I think what I heard you say is that, um, parks within the city are open to the public. Some of them are paid for by HOA, some of them are paid by the city. And that if a citizen had a concern about a maintenance issue, they could contact the city and the city would determine if they need to notify the HOA or not.
I, I think the clearer distinction on neighborhood parks versus regional parks, and the parks that we're talking about, um, bringing into the city are regional parks. So those serve a, a much wider area of the city. And there are some neighborhood parks that the city does maintain, um, but we don't maintain all of them. But the, the parks that are gonna be a burden are, are the bigger parks, the regional parks with more amenities and with the wider geographic area that they're representing. So it's not just walk-up, um, folks that live within a quarter mile of a neighborhood park. These are, these are much wider areas and, and have much wider use. And they have a lot different amenities.
Yeah. Well, I think that, um, the city of Wilsonville is really special because we do have so many beautiful amenities and that it is expensive to take care of, but it's a lot more expensive to go back if you don't maintain, to go back and then have to, you know, start from scratch and rebuild something. So anyway, thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
I think I know the answer we're gonna ask anyway. I'm assuming the parks that, kind of taking on Counselor Cunningham's Cunningham, uh, comment, excuse me, uh, that the parks that are coming into the city for maintenance, that's a done agreement that has to occur, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then you referenced the senior center, um, in some of the siding issues. Are those immediate concerns? Because I've also heard committee members wanna have a conversation on a new community center. And I understand we're on constraints fiscally, but I'd hate to invest in, uh, efforts to improve if they can be deferred until maybe those conversations happen.
Yeah.
It has been deferred several years and I think it's to the point where we need to do it.
We have to do it.
It's a city asset regardless, so even if it's not gonna be used as a community center, it will be used-
So it needs to be done.
Some public purpose.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, 2025 solid waste rate review and 2026 rate schedule.
Okay. Wonderful.
Hi, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Stephanie Davidson. I'm the Assistant City Attorney. I'm here with Chris Bell. Chris, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Uh, my name is Chris, excuse me, Chris Bell, Solid Waste Consultant for the city of Wilsonville.
So we're gonna tag-team this presentation tonight. I hope it goes, I've never done a presentation like this where one of us is virtual and the other one isn't, so hopefully it goes smoothly. I'm hoping to just, um, Chris, can you advance to the next slide? Thank you. I'm hoping to just give a few introductory comments and then hand it off to Chris. I spoke to you in the last couple of months about our relationship with Republic Services in general. It's governed by the franchise agreement, which isn't attached to the staff report for this meeting, but was previously provided to you. Essentially, um, there's a three-part relationship here. Uh, Republic Services has the exclusive rights to provide solid waste collection and disposal in the city of Wilsonville. In exchange, there's obligations and rights under the franchise agreement. Um, and then, of course, they provide the service to city residents and businesses. We're here tonight to kick off what we call the rate review process. Essentially, it's time for you all to consider, um, whether rates that city residents and businesses pay for solid waste collection and disposal services, whether those rates should increase in the new year. Um, let's see. So essentially, you need to balance a couple of things. Under the franchise agreement, it's, it's relevant to note that the stated goal is for Republic Services to have an operating margin of 10% of gross revenues. And you obviously need to balance that against, um, citizens and businesses' interest in not paying more for this essential service. So just before we get into the, the technical nitty-gritty and the numbers, I do want to just highlight that while parts of this rate review process can seem very technical and overwhelming, and when you're looking at those tables of rates, it probably just seems like a bunch of numbers, but really, at the end of the day, you're making a decision about what, um, citizens in the city are paying for an essential service. And it's a big deal to a lot of people. Um, so with that said, Chris, would you like to start talking about the, the technicality of how the franchise agreement talks about the rate review process?
Yes. So every year, the, uh, the, the franchise holler, Republic Services submits an annual report, uh, to the jurisdictions. And that report is a detailed cost report. And it breaks out the financial results for collection operations within the city of Wilsonville. And they also provide that, that report to the Clackamas Counties, Lake Oswego, uh, city of Twelton, all the places that they operate within the Portland metropolitan area require that report. And so Republic Services submits that report. That report's reviewed and, uh, as Stephanie was saying, the, there's, there's, there's a, a rate, um, range from eight to 12% operating, and we would like to hit the 10% margin or 10% margin annually. Um, and so when we review this process, we take into consideration the operations, uh, the rates, the services provided. We calculate, uh, what that cost would be. If there's adjustments made to that report for, for example, maybe a cost was over-allocated from one jurisdiction to another, we adjust that report and then we have a baseline report. In this case, the report that was received, uh, this year was for 2024. We take that 2024 report and we escalate it for the current year. And we estimate costs, uh, and what we call known and measurable costs. So for example, uh, Republic Services has a contract with the teamsters that specifically states this is what the collection drivers and the mechanics will be paid, uh, on an hourly basis. There is a commitment or requirement for Republic Services, as well as every other, um, hauler, to take that collected waste to a permitted facility, uh, for disposal. Disposal within the Portland metropolitan area, which Wilsonville is a part of, is controlled by Metro, Portland Metro, and they set the rates. And so for that disposal rate, Republic has to abide by that rate because they are permitted not by the city of Wilsonville, but by Portland Metro. We understand that that rate is adjusting every year on July 1st. This is no exception. We take that in consideration. We also look at other costs that we know are gonna either increase or decrease. Uh, in 2024, for example, there was a, uh, elimination of a tax credit, federal tax credit for compressed natural gas-powered vehicles. We took that consideration. We calculated what the impact would be for 2025 moving forward. And so after we took in all of those costs, and then we also took in consideration the revenue that was generated from the rate increase that I believe it was February 1st went into effect, we came up with an operating margin for the current year of 5.9%. And so because, uh, the, the, the city of Wilsonville has a specific ordinance that states this is how rates will be adjusted, there's two ways to do this. And, and the first one is in the option. And it says, 120, because the rate range was below, uh, a specific amount, the CPI increase is gonna be increased by 125%. That's CPI. And because the projected rate is under 8%, you'd apply that. In this case, you'd apply a 3.3% increase to the current rates. The rates that were passed in February would be adjusted by 3.3%. Adjusting or increasing the rates by that amount would generate another $227,000 worth of revenue within the city of Wilsonville. That's your first option. It's not even, it, it's barely enough to get them to the 8%. And so as we're recalibrating the rates, the increase needs to be higher than 3.3%. And the reason is because the, the driver wage, health insurance is increasing at a higher percent than CPI, disposal fees, and let me talk about disposal fees for a little bit.
Excuse me to interrupt. Is, is that Metro if we're thinking of that?
Yes, yes. Disposal fees over the last five years have increased by almost 76%, which is significant. And, and part of the problem is with, when you've got a CPI adjustment and you've got disposal increasing at that level, disposals of about 45% of the overall costs are being incurred right now by a Republic Service to provide the service. So when you have, in this case, disposal fee went up by 5%, 5.5% in 2025. Last year was over 10%. The previous year was over 10%. So we've got those double-digit increases. The CPI is not enough to maintain the rates or the rate, the rate, um, rate of return within that allowable margin. And then you also have other things too that are adjusted by CPI. So all those factors combined will not, will, will, will cause the rates, the CPI adjustment to be underperforming. And so part of the ordinance that has, that, that the city has is Republic Services can request an extraordinary rate increase, and these are the factors that Republic Services have identified as being out of their control or, in this case, contributing to the expenses being higher than the CPI will cover. So as I said, the estimated rate of return for 2025, for the current year we're in, we're in right now, is 5.9%. Option one is to adjust the rates by 125% of the CPI, which is 3.3%, and it doesn't generate enough revenue necessary to, to pull them within, within the margins. Therefore, the question then becomes, does the city want to consider an extraordinary rate adjustment to bring Republic Services up to the 10% margin? So if you adjust that by the 3.3%, the rates will, will increase across the board by 3.3% The rate of return for the various services varies. So for residential, the residential return was a little bit lower. The commercial rate of return was a little higher, and same with the drop box. So each one of those services need to be adjusted by some degree, not by a uniform amount, but by the cost of service. Or does the, the council want to adjust across the board by the 3.3%?
Can I chime in, Chris?
Yes.
So I've only been with the city of Wilsonville for a little over two years, so I've personally witnessed the last two rate review cycles. Part of the reason we wanted to ask these questions ahead of time is because in the past, we had presented multiple versions of the rate sheet for council to consider. I personally felt like that was overwhelming for me to understand, so we are hoping that by answering the, these questions at the next meeting, which is November 17th, I believe, you know, Chris Bell can incorporate your feedback on these questions into his work, generate one rate schedule for you to consider that implements the feedback that you've given us to hopefully make it a easier process. In the, in the past, there has been an appetite among multiple city councilors to incentivize people to create less waste by essentially not raising the rates of people with the smallest cart size and loading all of those rate increases onto the, you know, larger carts. So that's part of what we're trying to ask is, do you all have a preference on that front? Would you rather see a flat increase that's equivalent among all customer types and cart sizes? Or are, are you interested in seeing a rate sheet that, that implements the scheme that I just described, which is you sort of reward people for creating less waste?
With that, that triggers a question for me. Does, if we have people encouraged to recycle and utilize the bin, which is a large bin, would that bin be a part of this rate increase? And because they'll recycle more versus using the smaller garbage can?
Let me, let me make sure I understand the question.
Sure.
So you're, you're asking if you keep that smaller cart, the rate fixed, will that compel people to utilize a smaller cart?
Well, I just want to see if there's a way to design this where recycling will be encouraged, and those people that recycle more will save ultimately in the garbage bin that they have. And I, maybe we're already doing that, but I was just...
For, for the most part, they are typically, and I'll give you, this is my personal opinion. When everybody has a uniform size for, for recycling and the, there's no correlation between the size of garbage container you have versus recycling cart, the correlation on who recycles more has to do with income. And so the more affluent the neighborhood, the more they're going to recycling, recycle. And that's, Lake Oswego is probably one of the most affluent areas in this Portland metropolitan area, and they recycle the most. And it's just, that's just the way it's been. So to provide that, that, that delta between the, the 20-gallon and the 32-gallon, hoping that more people will, will recycle, there's not enough information or not enough relevant evidence to say there is a direct correlation.
Well, thank you for that education. Council President Berry?
So part of it is recycling and part of it is reduction in the amount of waste that you have. And I would like to answer Attorney Stephanie's question that I'd like to continue, where we incentivize where if people are reducing the amount of waste, then they're not paying as high of a rate. And then I think in the past, we've talked about trying to tie, tie the rates so that there's a steady little increase every year and not where we go several years without any increase and a large leap. And so this is the path that we're still on, right? Where we're trying to keep up with the cost of living and just do incremental rate increases instead of one large rate place and a plateau and another large.
Well, ye- yes, the, the city of Wilsonville has done in, small increases every year, but those small increases haven't kept up with the increased cost of collection and disposal. And like I said earlier, the big one is, is garbage disposal. There is that increase that does significantly impact the rates. And like I said, over the last few years, that increase is 76%. It's been significant. And, and so part of the way that the ordinance was set up, I believe it was six years ago, Amanda can, can, can correct me on that, there wasn't the level of rate increases for disposal coming from Metro as or has been over the last five years. And so if we didn't have those significant increases in disposal costs, we, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So there is a significant impact on that. To the question you do have, though, there is a, a significant difference between the 20-gallon right now and the 32-gallon as far as the cost of disposal. So the 20-gallon service is priced to provide that incentive for, for waste reduction. And so what, what Stephanie's asking, if do you want to maintain that, that difference or that delta between the two? Because that's, that's a simple calculation.
Okay, I'm gonna let Stephanie weigh in now because I think she's gonna supplement some information we could use.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Council President Berry, I just wanted to respond to something you just said. I would say that the franchise agreement, Amanda could speak to this better than I could because she was here when it was implemented, but my understanding is that the intent in the franchise agreement in providing for those regular year-over-year rate increases of, you know, CPI times 125%, the goal was to not have what we've had in the last few years, where you have a couple of years in a row where there's no rate increases, and then you have a decrease, and then you have an increase, and then you have a bigger increase. That's hard for a lot of residents and businesses to plan for, but unfortunately, the franchise agreement just has not worked the way it was intended to work. So that's how I would respond to your comment. It's, it probably makes sense for the city to reevaluate how it handles the rate review process.
Thank you. Councilor Cunningham?
Thank you. So the, the conversation around the, the small roll carts versus larger roll carts, I think it would be valuable to understand, because I know that the, the strategy has been to incentivize those smaller roll carts, but to see over the past several years what those increases have been in comparison to those different sizes. If it's been, you know, five, six years since we've increased those, those charges on the smaller roll, roll carts, maybe it's time for a, a small nominal fee to be increased on that because they can't just sit there at the same price forever while everyone else continues to, to change their fees. The other thing that I found valuable in the packet on page 21, it shows the adjusted 2024 results for roll carts, containers, drop boxes, and composites. And there's a pretty wide difference on those, all the way from a 1.7% margin to a 16% margin. And so I think it would be valuable to, to come back and, and see how we can adjust these rates, not just flat across the board, but to see how we can adjust in a way that, that evens those out a little bit and, and ensures that, you know, all those different things are, are getting the proper attention as we're looking at this.
Thank you. Councilor Chevlin?
Thank you. I'm trying to address the questions in front of us. Well, I, I don't very much like the, the name extraordinary rate increase, although I guess that's exactly what it is, but I wish there were a different way to wordsmith it so it didn't sound so extraordinary. Nevertheless, it is what it is. So trying to address the questions, I do believe that we should have increase that are different by category. Card size is also important, so I'll be looking forward to what we, what you're able to show us in, in November. I don't believe that the 3.3% increase across the board, I, how can we allow, allow Republic to, you know, operate below their operating margin? I mean, that just, it doesn't make sense, but, and I, and I understand where the increases are coming from, although it is, well, there's, there's the name extraordinary, but we know that wages are, are up and benefits are up and, you know, healthcare benefits, et cetera. And then the fuel increase is just overwhelming, and then the, the, the fees that come with having, you know, where the, the sites are. It, it's, it's tremendous, so I, I don't know how we can possibly, I mean, we're really stuck between a rock and a hard place. We have to be able to support the work that needs to be done, but we have to be able to make it affordable for our citizens to the extent possible. So it's really just a statement. I mean, I, I believe that the 3.3% across the board is not going to get, I don't support that, because these are just my opinions, but it's, it is pretty overwhelming what we would be needing to increase by. So I'm interested in seeing the fee schedule when you can get that worked out for us to review. Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham?
I'd just like to jump back in in support of Councilor Chevlin's comments just now that, you know, obviously, we're, we're the final, we're kind of the final stop on this train of, of where these rate increases go and, and what we may or may not have to do with these going forward. But she does point out that, you know, there's a lot of other things at play, and because we do have this agreement with Republic Services that we have to meet these certain margins, there is a level of, of this that, that is out of our hands, that we do have to look at ensuring that, that, that agreement's made whole and that we, we meet our part of that contract. So thank you for pointing that out, especially those 70% rate increase over the last five years from Metro. That's, that's a, that's a brutal hit to, to what we're trying to get done here. And, you know, looking back over the results of the, the different resolutions on this since 2019, it's, it's fluctuated all over the place. We've had, we even had a year where the, the fees went down. Unfortunately, there was also a couple of years where the rates didn't change, and, and so now we, as, as our council, have to look at this and, and make some tough choices. And, but at the end of the day, we have to make sure that that agreement is, is met because we have that obligation. So, thank you.
And to me, it's a little frustrating because Metro, the business model and that relationship between Republic Services and Metro appears, it's problematic, and I'm interested to see how that's going to work long-term. The thing that you educated me on that is that people of, in those marginalized communities tend to use that larger bin more, I believe is what you said.
No.
Statistically.
And recycle less.
Recycle less. Thus may trigger usage of that larger bin more, possibly.
Yes.
I, okay, because I know when I had a, when we had a small child, our bin went hugely bigger. And if you have lots of children, you know, or, and you tend to go to that, and then when your child's old enough, especially with the diapers passed, you tend to think about that. I can understand that some families don't have that luxury. So anyway, that's a good education for me.
One thing too, that, in, in addition to that, is when you look at the level of service that's being provided, for example, the, the cost of collecting the recycling cart is standardized across everybody. Everybody gets the same size of cart, and some people utilize that fully, some don't. Same with the yard debris cart, you know, there, there's, there's some have bigger yards, some have smaller yards, but the, the cost of providing that cart is the same. And so the really cost of the service of being provided, the differential, is that amount of garbage that's set up, because we set the rate based on the size of that garbage container, you know, whether it's a 20, 32, 64, 96. But if you look at the delta or the difference between the cost of disposal between those card sizes, it's not signif, it's not, it's not huge. And back to, to, to the earlier question, there is, there is a, a bigger spread on a 20-gallon cart compared to the 32-gallon cart to provide that incentive to recycle because some people will see that, and I can save a few dollars if I move more material into the recycling cart. And some people do that. And then the other piece too is, you know, people that utilize that 20-gallon cart, a lot of them are, are, you know, older, the, the kids have left, the diapers are gone, you know, so it's just a, you know, married couple. And so typically, they don't generate a lot of garbage. And so there's also that incentive, that financial incentive to, you know, kind of the senior rate, but it's not set at a senior rate, but they can utilize that smaller garbage cart, and it'll fulfill their needs.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to make sure that Chris has some really good direction on this, and I've heard kind of varying degree of discussion about the distinction between treating categories differently, so such as residential versus commercial versus the drop box, and then within a category like residential, providing, you know, some consideration for the smaller cart size. So to Councilor Cunningham's point, for example, in the last rate review that was done, the 20-gallon residential rate increased by 8.8%, but then the 35 was 9.3 and the 65 was 9.5. So I'd be interested to know, is council wanting to see a rate sheet that, within a category, applies the same percentage and then maybe treats, so the cart size the same, but, and then different categories differently? Or do you want both the categories treated differently and cart sizes within... Or do you want both the categories treated differently and cart sizes within those categories treated differently?
Councilor Chevlin, you had your hand up originally.
Yeah, I want to be able to have us respond to Amanda's question first though before I just share what I was going to share, so it's not that important. Can you restate, Amanda, what you just said, please?
Yeah, so I think what, if I understood what Councilor Cunningham was suggesting was that if there has already been consideration given in prior rate reviews for the smallest cart to essentially be subsidized by other sized carts to incentivize recycling over waste, does council still want to see a further incentive, a further incentive put into this next rate review? Or within residential, would you like to see the same rate across the board applied? I guess that's the easiest way to ask my question. And then between residential and commercial, there would be variation in the percentage.
Well, maybe I will share my example that I was going to share, my personal example because it does get a bit to your question. I like the idea of incentivizing. So I live in Charbonneau. We moved to a smaller garbage container and we aggressively recycle. So we have the recycle bin. We also recycle glass and anything else that can go in the glass container. And because of where we live in Charbonneau, not all Charbonneau residents use a yard waste bin because their yards are maintained by the commercial landscapers, but that's not the case in our home and a number of other homes in Charbonneau. So we're responsible for our landscape landscaping and yard debris. We have two yard debris barrels because we have a lot of trees, and so we're able to also put our food waste in the yard debris barrels, which means we have to hose those out a little bit more frequently than we used to. But I wouldn't consider myself affluent like those, my, you know, neighbors in Lake Oswego, but we, perhaps it's the senior citizen approach, but that's what we do. We put as much stuff into the recycle and the yard debris and as little as we can. We even have a trash compactor in the kitchen, and when we purchased it, when we had the kitchen remodeled 12 years ago, the salesperson said, oh, not very many people buy those anymore. I wonder why you're even buying one. And I thought, well, boy, that's ridiculous. It really compacts the garbage and we can use a smaller bin. So, back to the question, I think we should incentivize to the extent possible, but I think what you're asking is can we still maintain the rates for the small barrels, larger barrels, et cetera, as having those be the same? I think, isn't that correct? If that's correct, I support that.
Yeah, basically, exactly. So we, so right now, the way the rate review, the rate schedule works is those Charbonneau residents who don't, who their landscapers handle yard debris, they already pay a little bit less than others. And then between the 20-gallon and then the larger bins, the 35 and 65, there's already an incentive built in. And so the question I'm asking is basically, do you want to maintain that current level of incentive or add additional incentive, meaning a larger increase would be applied to the larger bins even within residential?
I'm afraid that would probably impact the operating margin and then we'd still be, we wouldn't be supporting what we're trying to do, which is to, you know, get the operating margin to a place where Republic, you know, so we're in agreement with the contract that we have. So I don't, if that's B as part of your question, I would rather support A as part of your question.
Councilor Cunningham.
So I think you just said a moment ago, Amanda, that in the last rate increase, it was about, I think you said about an 8% for the smaller one and about a 9% for the larger one. So we're not talking about a huge difference in increase between the two.
Yeah, it's less, I mean, it's less than a dollar. It's looking at the numbers.
Yeah, so I guess to my original point that I had made on this, I was going to say that, you know, if those numbers had been stagnant, if there had been no increases at all for 20-gallon, we'd have to look at something like that. It sounds like, I support, I support the incentive model where there is, you know, everybody, there would be an increase overall, but the increase for the 20-gallon would be slightly smaller than for the larger ones as we did last year. That seems to make sense to me, that it would keep that incentive in place while also just making sure that we're pushing towards the goal of making this agreement whole. So I don't, the rest of the council, if that sounds reasonable, I think.
I agree with that as well. Oh, Council President Barry.
I also agree with that. I thought that was well stated. Thank you.
Anything for?
Another quick clarifying question. It sounds like Councilor Cunningham and Councilor Chevlin are comfortable granting the request for the extraordinary rate increase. Are you all comfortable with the legal analysis that I laid out in the staff report? And are you comfortable accepting that rate increase request?
Can we come up with another name?
Yeah, exactly.
Totally agree.
Special rate increase. But yes.
I agree as well, but different wording. Thank you. I think that's.
So, do you all have any other clarifying questions or direction you want to provide us before I go over the timeline and next steps with you?
Seeing none, go ahead.
All right. So our next step, now that you've given us the direction that you want to pursue the extraordinary rate increase, Chris Bell is going to incorporate the feedback you provided today, come up with a proposed rate schedule, and present that to you all for you to consider at a work session on November 17th. Rate increases require 30 days before they are effective, so in theory, you could adopt the proposed rate schedule on November 17th or even as late as December 1st. And given that December is 31 days, it could still be effective, the new rates could be effective on January 1st. If you all miss those deadlines, and for example, if you adopt a rate schedule in early January, those rates would not be effective for another 30 days. That's actually how we ended up this year with a rate schedule that was effective on February 1st. So those are our next steps. Chris, do you have any other questions or do you need any other direction to prepare proposed rate schedule?
I do have a question, a clarifying question for Councilor Cunningham. You mentioned when you looked at the report, there is that delta between the rate of return for residential versus commercial versus drop box. And so what I would do is, the combination of all three of those services, we're looking for a 10% rate of return. So do you want to maintain the rates for commercial? And as you're maintaining those rates, that rate of return, that margin for commercial would decrease over time, the offset would be an increase for residential and drop box service?
Yeah, so looking at this, it looks like it's on page 21, and then there's similar numbers on page 23 that get to this point, the return on revenues. The roll cart shows 3.3, container shows 13.1, drop box 0.9, and composite 5.9. So, I mean, it seems like that drop box definitely needs a larger adjustment. You know, as much as I'd like to keep our residential rates down, we're going to have to look at some sort of increase there. 3.3 is pretty far from 10%. So, yeah, it's hard to kind of tell without some options and looking at what's in front of us. So, but I think we do need to see options across the board on what we can do with that to make that number.
So what I would typically do is I'd, like I said, lock that, that commercial down. And we estimate, you know, it's going to return X number of dollars. And so that contributes to the overall composite of 10, you know, to 10%. And then adjust the drop box and whatever that, whatever it take to get to 10%. And then the offset, the last piece would be how much residential, how much would the increase be for residential and then adjust that accordingly. And so over time, we're trying to recalibrate and get those rates back to 10% across the board. You know, we could do one foul swoop or we can do it over a period of time. And that's what I'm looking for, that direction. We want to just do it over time and lock in the, or maintain the commercial rates and then slowly increase the other two to get to that 10%.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a lot more digestible if we can find a way to do this a little bit easier over time and try to level things out a little smoother than dropping a large increase all at once.
Okay, cooking the frog little by little.
A little bit.
Yes.
Okay. I think we've had.
Sorry, one more question. Just to be totally, totally clear, are you hoping to see multiple proposed rate schedules on November 17th from Chris? Like a couple of different options to consider?
I would like to see that.
I mean, I think we all have options. So if we had a couple to look at, that would be helpful to give us some wiggle room and some ability to, you know, find a happy medium for all parties and all interests involved.
Okay. Options that maintain the kind of reduction for the smaller cars.
For the smaller containers. Or at least the incentive of not having as large of an increase.
Council President Barry and Councilor Chevlin, do you concur with that thought?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Amanda, you have something that you want to discuss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we're moving off this item, I just wanted to take a moment while I still have Stephanie here to share some comments about her. You may be aware that Stephanie has been offered the opportunity to join the county council's office for Lane County. And so I just want to take a moment to share my appreciation for Stephanie's contributions to the city during her time as the Assistant City Attorney. During her time here, Stephanie took on updating the city's public contracting code, which hadn't been substantially updated since the early 2000s when the last major state legislative update occurred. Within that work, she also provided trainings to city staff on the new regulations and has spent countless hours guiding city staff through the city's public contracting process. Stephanie was also instrumental in the city's processing of and response to the applications submitted by Home Depot, seeking a determination of continuation of non-conforming use. That process was highly technical, requiring hours of legal research and analysis, education to city staff, DAB members, and city councilors throughout the administrative appeals process, and then writing the briefs for, before both the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Court of Appeals. I will say it's exceptionally rare for the Court of Appeals to issue an AWOP in a land use case, and that means that it was affirming Luba's decision without an opinion. It is almost unheard of to get that type of outcome mere weeks after oral argument and during the holiday season. Most of the credit for that outcome goes to Stephanie's legal work throughout that year-long process. I want to wish Stephanie the best as she continues her local government work at Lane County and thank her for her dedication to the city of Wilsonville during her tenure here. So thank you, Stephanie.
Here, here.
Thank you, Amanda. Great job.
Yeah. You're making a big mistake, Lane County. Oh, boy, that's where I started my legal career, but if it provides you that projection upward, we applaud you, but we'll miss you.
I will miss you all. Good luck.
Just thank you so much for all the work that you've done. I thought you did an outstanding job every time you brought a presentation with us. It was well thought out and organized, so we really, really wish you the best and maybe someday you'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
With that. Amanda, can we move the executive session up to now by any chance?
I think that would be fine if, as long as you make the announcement to switch over.
Okay.
Before we end the work session.
Sounds good. Just give me. Okay, the work session is adjourned at 6:24. The city council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, Section 192, Section 660, Subsection 2, Paragraph H. Legal counsel slash litigation to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers.
I call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for October 20, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Chevlin?
Here.
Council President Berry?
Here.
Councilor Cunningham?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here. Please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the following order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes for zero. Good evening, everyone. The traditions and celebrations of the fall are well underway here in Wilsonville. Tonight, I want to take a little time to speak about something important, given recent events. And to help me do that, I've asked someone I have a deep appreciation and respect for as a community member, as a colleague, and as our current Chair of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, Carla Brashear, has been a thoughtful and trusted voice in the community, and I'm grateful for her assistance this evening. I'd like to invite her to come forward at the podium. Good evening. In Wilsonville, we've made an intentional choice to become a city of belonging. It's a shared commitment, not just a slogan. It reflects the kind of community we are choosing to build together, one where every person has the chance to contribute, to feel safe, and to be valued for who they are.
Buenas noches. En Wilsonville hemos tomado una decisión intencional, convertirnos en una ciudad de pertenencia. Es un compromiso compartido, no solo palabras. Refleja el tipo de comunidad que estamos eligiendo construir juntos. Una en la que cada persona tenga la oportunidad de contribuir, de sentir segura, y de ser valorada por quienes.
Tonight, I want to honor our immigrant and refugee communities, not as a footnote to Wilsonville's story, but as a central part of it. Here in Oregon, Latino families have, for generations, helped build and sustain the communities we call home, working in agriculture, construction, education, healthcare, and small businesses. Their contributions are woven deeply into the story of the state and the city.
Esta noche quiero honrar a nuestras comunidades de inmigrantes y refugiados, no como una nota al pie en la historia de Wilsonville, sino como una parte central de ella. Aquí en Oregon, las familias latinas han ayudado durante generaciones a construir y mantener las comunidades que llamamos hogar, trabajando en la agricultura, la construcción, la educación, la atención médica, y los pequeños negocios. Sus contribuciones están profundamente entretejidas en la historia de este estado y de esta ciudad.
Immigrants and refugees as a whole bring with them languages, food, art, faith, celebrations, and histories that enrich the soul of our city. They teach all of us, most notably through our dual-language program for our children. They make Wilsonville a place where many cultures don't just live side by side, they connect, share, and grow together.
Los inmigrantes y refugiados traen consigo idiomas, comida, arte, fe, celebraciones de historias que enriquecen el alma de nuestra ciudad. Nos enseñan a todos, especialmente a través de nuestro programa de educación dual para nuestros niños. Hacen de Wilsonville un lugar donde muchas culturas no solo coexisten, sino que conectan, comparten, y crecen juntas.
When we gather at cultural festivals, in schools, places of worship, parks, and around kitchen tables, we see a community woven from many stories. That richness, that mix of traditions and perspectives, gives Wilsonville its heart.
Cuando nos reunimos en festivales culturales, en escuelas, parques, y alrededor de la mesa del hogar, vemos una comunidad tejida a partir de muchas historias. Esa riqueza, esa mezcla de tradiciones y perspectivas, le da corazón a Wilsonville.
And yes, our immigrant and refugee neighbors also strengthen Wilsonville in practical ways. They are part of the workforce that keeps our economy moving, in logistics, manufacturing, healthcare, education, agriculture, and through small businesses that create jobs and opportunity. But their cultural and civic contributions are not just an asset, they are a foundation of community we are building. This is what belonging looks like, not erasing differences, but embracing them as a source of strength.
Y sí, nuestros vecinos inmigrantes y refugiados también fortalecen Wilsonville de maneras prácticas. Son parte de la fuerza laboral que mantiene nuestra economía en movimiento, en manufactura, salud, educación, agricultura, y en pequeños negocios que crean empleos y oportunidades. Pero sus contribuciones culturales y civicas no son solo un valor añadido, son la base de la comunidad que estamos construyendo. Esto es lo que significa pertenecer, no borrar las diferencias, sino abrazarlas como fuentes de fortaleza.
I've heard real fear from families worried by reports of immigration enforcement in our city and region. While those actions may target specific individuals, the fear they stir ripples outward. It reaches first-generation Americans, permanent residents, communities of color, LGBTQ+ neighbors, people who know how fragile a sense of belonging can feel when fear enters the picture.
He escuchado miedo real de familias preocupadas por reportes de operativos migratorios en nuestra ciudad y en la región. Aunque esas acciones pueden dirigirse a individuos específicos, el miedo que provocan se extiende. Llega a americanos de primera generación, residentes permanentes, comunidades de color, vecinos LGBTQ+, personas que saben no frágil que puede sentirse el sentido de pertenencia cuando el miedo entra en la conversación.
And when that moment came early last week, Wilsonville didn't look away. Community members, neighbors, parents, and local leaders sprang into action to support one another. Our schools responded swiftly and clearly, making sure families knew their children were safe and supported. It wasn't just one voice, it was many. That's who we are as a community.
Y cuando ese momento llegó a principios de la semana pasada, Wilsonville no miró hacia otro lado. Miembros de la comunidad, vecinos, padres, y líderes locales actuaron rápidamente para apoyarse mutuamente. Nuestras escuelas respondieron con rapidez y claridad, asegurándose que las familias supieran que sus hijos estaban seguros y apoyados. No fue solo una voz, fueron muchas. Eso es lo que somos como comunidad.
Moments like that remind us that belonging isn't just words, it's something we live together. I see people on social media say, quote, "If you haven't broken the law, you have nothing to fear," end quote. But history shows that's not true for everyone.
Momentos como ese nos recuerdan que la pertenencia no son solo palabras, es algo que vivimos juntos. He visto en las redes sociales a personas decir, "Si no has quebrado la ley, no tienes nada de que temer." Pero la historia nos demuestra que eso no es verdad para todos.
I call to order the meeting of the Willson City Council for October 20, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Shevlin?
Here.
Counsel President Berry?
Here.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Mayor O'Neill?
Here. Please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel President Berry can have a motion to approve the falling order of agenda?
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes for zero. Good evening, everyone. The traditions and celebrations of the fall are well underway here in Wilsonville. Tonight, I want to take a little time to speak about something important, given recent events. And to help me do that, I've asked someone I have a deep appreciation and respect for as a community member, as a colleague, and as our current Chair of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Carla Brashear has been a thoughtful and trusted voice in the community, and I'm grateful for her assistance this evening. I'd like to invite her to come forward at the podium. Good evening. In Wilsonville, we've made an intentional choice to become a city of belonging. It's a shared commitment, not just a slogan. It reflects the kind of community we are choosing to build together, one where every person has the chance to contribute, to feel safe, and to be valued for who they are.
Buenas noches. En Wilsonville hemos tomado una decisión intencional, convertirnos en una ciudad de pertenencia. Es un compromiso compartido, no solo palabras. Refleja el tipo de comunidad que estamos eligiendo construir juntos. Uno en la que cada persona tenga la oportunidad de contribuir, de sentir segura y de ser valorada por quienes.
Tonight, I want to honor our immigrant and refugee communities, not as a footnote to Wilsonville's story, but as a central part of it. Here in Oregon, Latino families have, for generations, helped build and sustain the communities we call home, working in agriculture, construction, education, healthcare, and small businesses. Their contributions are woven deeply into the story of this state and this city.
Esta noche quiero honrar a nuestras comunidades de inmigrantes y refugiados, no como una nota al pie en la historia de Wilsonville, sino como una parte central de ella. Aquí en Oregon, las familias latinas han ayudado durante generaciones a construir y mantener las comunidades que llamamos hogar, trabajando en la agricultura, la construcción, la educación, la atención médica, y los pequeños negocios. Sus contribuciones están profundamente entretejidas en la historia de este estado y de esta ciudad.
Immigrants and refugees as a whole bring with them languages, food, art, faith, celebrations, and histories that enrich the soul of our city. They teach all of us, most notably through our dual-language program for our children. They make Wilsonville a place where many cultures don't just live side by side, they connect, share, and grow together.
Los inmigrantes y refugiados traen consigo idiomas, comida, arte, fe, celebraciones de historias que enriquecen el alma de nuestra ciudad. Nos enseñan a todos, especialmente a través de nuestro programa de educación dual para nuestros niños. Hacen de Wilsonville un lugar donde muchas culturas no solo coexisten, sino que conectan, comparten, y crecen juntas.
When we gather at cultural festivals, in schools, places of worship, parks, and around kitchen tables, we see a community woven from many stories. That richness, that mix of traditions and perspectives, gives Wilsonville its heart.
Cuando nos reunimos en festivales culturales, en escuelas, parques, y alrededor de la mesa del hogar, vemos una comunidad tejida a partir de muchas historias. Esa riqueza, esa mezcla de traducciones y perspectivas, le da corazón a Wilsonville.
And yes, our immigrant and refugee neighbors also strengthen Wilsonville in practical ways. They are part of the workforce that keeps our economy moving, in logistics, manufacturing, healthcare, education, agriculture, and through small businesses that create jobs and opportunity. But their cultural and civic contributions are not just an asset, they are a foundation of community we are building. This is what belonging looks like, not erasing differences, but embracing them as a source of strength.
Y sí, nuestros vecinos inmigrantes y refugiados también fortalecen Wilsonville de maneras prácticas. Son parte de la fuerza laboral que mantiene nuestra economía en movimiento, en manufactura, salud, educación, agricultura, y en pequeños negocios que crean empleos y oportunidades. Pero sus contribuciones culturales y cívicas no son solo un valor añadido, son la base de la comunidad que estamos construyendo. Esto es lo que significa pertenecer, no borrar las diferencias, sino abrazarlas como fuentes de fortaleza.
I've heard real fear from families worried by reports of immigration enforcement in our city and region. While those actions may target specific individuals, the fear they stir ripples outward. It reaches first-generation Americans, permanent residents, communities of color, LGBTQ+ neighbors, people who know how fragile a sense of belonging can feel when fear enters the picture.
He escuchado miedo real de familias preocupadas por reportes de operativos migratorios en nuestra ciudad y en la región. Aunque esas acciones pueden dirigirse a individuos específicos, el miedo que provocan se extiende. Llega a americanos de primera generación, residentes permanentes, comunidades de color, vecinos LGBTQ, personas que saben no fradil que puede sentirse el sentido de pertenencia cuando el miedo entra en la conversación.
And when that moment came early last week, Wilsonville didn't look away. Community members, neighbors, parents, and local leaders sprang into action to support one another. Our schools responded swiftly and clearly, making sure families knew their children were safe and supported. It wasn't just one voice, it was many. That's who we are as a community.
Y cuando ese momento llegó a principios de la semana pasada, Wilsonville no miró hacia otro lado. Miembros de la comunidad, vecinos, padres, y líderes locales actuaron rápidamente para apoyarse mutuamente. Nuestras escuelas respondieron con rapidez y claridad, asegurándose que las familias supieran que sus hijos estaban seguros y apoyados. No fue solo una voz, fueron muchas. Eso es lo que somos como comunidad.
Moments like that remind us that belonging isn't just words, it's something we live together. I see people on social media say, quote, "If you haven't broken the law, you have nothing to fear," end quote. But history shows that's not true for everyone.
Momentos como ese nos recuerdan que la pertenencia no son solo palabras, es algo que vivimos juntos. He visto en las redes sociales a personas decir, "Si no has quebrado la ley, no tienes nada de que temer." Pero la historia nos demuestra que eso no es verdad para todos.
Some of the darkest chapters in history remind us that fear doesn't just arise from breaking the law, it can be created when the law itself is written and enforced to target people.
Alguno de los capítulos más oscuros de la historia nos recuerdan que el miedo no solo surge al quebrante de dar la ley, puede ser creado cuando la ley misma se escribe y se aplica para atacar a personas.
Throughout our nation's history, laws have been passed that explicitly target immigrants and communities of color, laws that barred Irish and Asian immigrants, excluded Chinese laborers, punished Japanese Americans during World War II, and denied Black Americans their most basic rights. And beyond our borders, history shows us where such laws can lead, as in Nazi Germany, where fear was not just tolerated, but engineered through the law itself.
A lo largo de la historia de nuestra nación, se han aprobado leyes que apuntaron explícitamente a los inmigrantes y a las comunidades de color, leyes que prohibieron la entrada de inmigrantes irlandeses y asiáticos, que excluieron a trabajadores chinos, que castigaron a japones-americanos durante la Segunda Guerra Mundial, y que negaron a los afroamericanos sus derechos más básicos. Y más allá de nuestros fronteras, la historia nos muestra hacia dónde pueden llevar esas leyes, como en la Alemania Nazi, donde el miedo no solo fue tolerado, sino diseñado a través de la ley misma.
These laws weren't passed in calm times, they were passed during wars, economic crises, and periods of deep national division, moments when fear and uncertainty too often became an excuse to turn against those who were seen as different.
Estas leyes no se aprobaron en tiempos tranquilos, se aprobaron durante guerras, crisis económicas, y periodos de profunda división nacional, momentos en que el miedo y la incertidumbre se convirtieron con demasiada frecuencia en una excusa para volverse contra quienes eran vistos como diferentes.
So, when some of our neighbors feel uneasy today, that's not imagined, it's remembered. It's rooted in the knowledge that the law has not always protected everyone equally. And that fear often finds its way into policy when a nation is under stress.
Así que cuando algunos de nuestros vecinos se sienten inseguros hoy, no es imaginación, es memoria. Está arraigada en el conocimiento de que la ley no siempre ha protegido a todos por igual, y que el miedo a menudo se filtra en las políticas cuando una nación está bajo presión.
Wilsonville's commitment to belonging does not waver in the face of fear. I personally may not control federal actions, but as mayor, I can speak clearly about who we are and what we stand for. We stand for safety, we stand for dignity, we stand for respect, we stand for community.
El compromiso de Wilsonville con la pertenencia no se debilita ante el miedo. Puede que no tenga control sobre las acciones federales, pero como alcalde puedo hablar con claridad sobre quiénes somos y qué defendemos. Defendemos la seguridad, defendemos la dignidad, defendemos el respeto, y defendemos la comunidad.
No one in Wilsonville should have to look over their shoulder to feel safe. No family should feel they must shrink from public life. No child should wonder whether their language, heritage, or their identity puts them at risk.
Nadie en Wilsonville debería tener que mirar por encima del hombro para sentirse seguro. Ninguna familia debería sentir como debe esconderse de la vida pública. Ningún niño debería preguntarse si su idioma, su herencia, o si su identidad le pone en riesgo.
To our immigrant and refugee neighbors, you belong here. Your cultures enrich our shared life. Your contributions make this city stronger. Belonging isn't just a vision, it defines who we are as a community. Many cultures, one heart, one Wilsonville.
A nuestros vecinos inmigrantes y refugiados, ustedes pertenecen aquí. Sus culturas enriquecen nuestra vida compartida, sus contribuciones hacen que esta ciudad sea más fuerte, y su presencia es parte del futuro de Wilsonville. La pertenencia no es solo una visión, define quiénes somos como comunidad. Muchas culturas, un solo corazón, una sola Wilsonville.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And I want to ask us to give a standing ovation to the interpreter this evening. Moving on, my wife and I had the honor of attending the DEI Committee Speaker Series, supporting transgender family members, friends, and neighbors. The event was held right here in the city council chambers, and the room was packed, a powerful sign that people in Wilsonville want to learn, understand, and show up for one another. The panelists shared honest, deeply personal stories about identity, love, courage, and family. These weren't abstract issues, these were neighbors, friends, and community members opening their hearts. What moved me most was how the evening centered on education and empathy, helping people better understand transgender experiences, and showing how we can all play a role in creating a more supportive community. Groups like Nominee Clackamas and Basic Rights Oregon shared practical tools and resources to help families, friends, and neighbors become stronger allies. And just as importantly, they reminded us that transgender people contribute every day to the fabric of our community as parents, students, workers, volunteers, and leaders. I want to thank the speakers, the DEI Committee, and our partners for creating a space where learning leads to understanding, and understanding strengthens the bonds that hold this community Next week, city staff and I will be traveling to Washington, D.C. for a lobbying trip on behalf of Wilsonville. For many years, we've participated in the regional J-PAC trip organized by Metro. That trip has been valuable for building relationships, but as a smaller city, it has often been difficult to get Wilsonville's priorities, like the Boone Bridge, to the top of the list. This year, Metro limited attendance to only jurisdictions with a J-PAC seat, which Wilsonville doesn't have. Rather than sit on the sidelines, we're taking this opportunity to advocate directly for our community's needs. Staff has organized a focused lobbying trip to elevate longstanding Wilsonville priorities, including Boone Bridge replacement, housing and economic development support, transit funding opportunities, and Aurora Airport issues. We'll be meeting with Senator Ron Wyden, Senator Jeff Merkley, Congresswoman Andrea Salinas, the Deputy Assistant Secretary for the Interior Governmental Affairs at the United States Department of Transportation, the FAA's Chief of Staff for airports, and staff from the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. These meetings do more than check a box, they build relationships with our federal partners, elevate awareness of Wilsonville, and allow us to make the case for federal investments that can reduce the burden on our general fund and help us deliver projects the city can't fund alone. They also give us the chance to show federal agencies, often looking at policies from 30,000 feet, how those decisions land in real communities like ours. The trip is about making sure Wilsonville's voice is heard clearly and directly, it's about showing that we're not just a small city tucked between larger jurisdictions, we are connected, forward-looking community with real priorities and a strong vision for our future. With that, our next city council meeting will be on Monday, November 3, starting at 7:00 p.m. Turning to communications, Republic Services, our city-franchised solid waste hauler, is here to present their annual report on activities in the city. Cindy Rogers is the Municipal Sales Manager for Republic, and Travis Comfort is the Municipal Contract Administrator. And I want to thank them publicly, I really appreciate the tour that they provide and educate me personally on what you do and some of the challenges you face.
Give us just a moment.
Is that right, sir?
Yes. There we go. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers, and I am your Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services, and I am joined here this evening by Travis Comfort, your Municipal Contract Administrator. As you may recall, Travis and I presented the Recycling Modernization Act and gave a legislative update in June of this year. Our presentation this evening is a review of the essential services we provided for the city of Wilsonville in 2024. We'll be back in early 2026 to give council an update on the Recycling Modernization Act that went into effect in July of this year. Next slide. In 2024, our drivers were at the homes of over 57 households 12 times a month. That is a slight increase over 2023. The 35-gallon cart for trash continues to be the most popular size. The residents and businesses of Wilsonville have a robust waste and recycling program. Included with their weekly trash service is commingle recycling, yard debris, which includes food waste, a bin for glass, and in that bin for glass you can put motor oil and batteries. All of these services are provided once a week. We also offer additional services, including Recycle Plus for hard-to-recycle items, bulky waste pickup for items that won't fit into your roll cart, and drop boxes for larger projects. The chart in the lower right corner shows the total residential tons collected in 2024, which was nearly 7,700 tons. This averages out to 1.35 tons per household. That's a slight increase over 2023, which was 1.33 tons per household. Next slide, please. For businesses and multifamily, we offer trash up to six times a week, recycling up to five days a week, and food waste up to four days a week, and glass weekly. The charts in the lower left and middle show how many multifamily and commercial customers we serviced in 2024. I do want to call out, there is a small typo where it says, "containers," it really should be "customers," so these are customer accounts, not container accounts. So my apologies for that. While customer counts were nearly the same in 2023, we did see an increase of about 11% in tons in 2024. The total commercial tons collected in 2024 were over 8,800 versus almost 7,900 in 2023. On Slide 4 shows the number of industrial hauls that we did in 2024. So industrial hauls are drop boxes that range from 10 yards to 40 yards, or trash compactors. In 2024, we did 6,112 industrial hauls, and this is down slightly from what we did in 2023, which was 6,052. So it's only about 40 hauls difference, so it's not huge by any means. We hauled over 18,000 tons of material in 2024, which again is slightly down from 2023. Each year, our operations teams reviews the routes and uses special software to build the most efficient routes possible. We measure the efficiencies for residential by the number of customers that we service per hour. Commercial is measured by the number of yards that we service per hour, and drop boxes and compactors are measured by the time it takes to do each haul. Things like weather, traffic, road construction impact those efficiencies. The water pipeline project had a significant impact on our efficiencies in 2024, especially for our industrial hauls. Each time when we pick up a box, it has to be taken back to our transfer station. As you know, Southwest 95th was under construction for all of 2024, and Southwest 95th is one of the main roads that we use to access our facility. Currently, the water pipeline project is impacting Ritter Road, which is where our transfer station is, which is where it's located, and that is where our trucks are dispatched from. Our trucks return back to WRI several times throughout the day, and then return at the end of their route every evening. The project is scheduled to continue through 2025 and into 2026. And then I will hand it off to Travis, and he will talk to you about the recycling depot, and then he'll wrap it up with upcoming events.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Counsel President Berry, Wilsonville City Council, ladies and gentlemen, back house today. As many of you may know, Wilsonville residents and businesses can access our depot on Southwest Ritter Road, just off of 95th, for free, and its operating hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and it is now staffed by a recent Wilsonville High School graduate, Harrison, and the customers love him. He's coming up on his two-year work anniversary, and we are thankful to have him on our team. People can drop off cardboard, electronic waste, glass bottles, scrap metal, metal cans, plastic bottles and jugs, and paper. And along with the new recycling law, additional items have been added as well. Due to road construction, as Cindy mentioned, there was a period of time from August 4 to September 2, where we had to close access to the depot due to road construction and public safety concerns. It is our honor to be Wilsonville's hauler, and we take our customer service very seriously. All customer service complaints and issues are handled by our local operations team, and over my six years in this role, I've seen this number improve year over year. You may have noticed in our annual report that Harrison received several compliments last year, and we continue to hear good praise on his willingness to help anybody that comes to the depot and his positive attitude in doing so. Residents are also thankful for our drivers' attention to the children on their routes and those that love Garbage Day. What the Opportunity to Recycle Oregon Law requires that cities with population over 4,000 have to implement recycling programs, giving Wilsonville residents and businesses the opportunity to recycle. We work directly with the city staff and Clackamas County to make sure all of Wilsonville's requirements are met. Here you can see the recycling guide in the center is the one we sent out last year, and then I provided an in-person copy for Mayor and Counselor Cunningham to see the one that we were sending out in just over three weeks. So it's got the updated items, and then on the back, it's got the detailed instructions for how to recycle batteries. Community outreach is a large part of Cindy and I's job, it's one of the best parts, actually, when we can get out in the community. Each year, we work with the public schools to do touch-a-trucks and the big rig event at Wilsonville Elementary. This is my second year, our second year, tabling the Wilsonville Earth Day celebration, and it's a great customer interaction because it's face-to-face, there's business leaders that came to that event, there are families that came to that event, so it gave us opportunity to speak with different types of customers face-to-face. This allowed us to go over impacts that are challenging for our industry, changes coming from Metro, and then also the new recycling law. Wilsonville residents and businesses have two opportunities each year to dispose of bulky waste items. These are items too large to fit in their roll cart for service at home. This This, this event has become very popular, and at our June 21st bulky waste event, we had 463 vehicles bringing in just over 55 tons of material.
Impressive.
It's, it's an amazing amount of material that we're getting out of there. And we also built a relationship with the recycling partnership, and they were the producer response, recycling, or the mattress recycling council. They were created as the producer responsible organization for mattress recycling in Oregon, and so that partnering with them allowed us to offer Wilsonville residents an opportunity to have their mattresses recycled at zero cost. So it didn't cost us any, they didn't charge us, and we weren't, we didn't have to charge residents, and we recycled 65 mattresses at our June event. They do have a limited budget, so we're hoping to get that at least once a year in Wilsonville. Each fall, Wilsonville residents get an annual opportunity to drop off as many leaves as they would like. There are two drop-off locations. The main one is at Wilsonville City Hall, right out here in the parking lot, and the other one is in Charbonneau. Last year, we hauled just over 20 tons of leaves on the two events. Heading into the holiday season, Wilsonville has its Fall Bulky Waste Event this Saturday, so that's from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at our Ritter Road facility. And I'd like to give a big shout out to the Rotary. They always work with elder members in the community. They had to shut it off today, but they've, they've got 32 homes that they're going to be helping get material to the event on Saturday. So they get volunteers, they provide the vehicles and the labor. It's, it's a really good opportunity. And then the upcoming leaf drops on November 22nd, so, and that's again the same date. It's a Saturday for both City Hall and Charbonneau. Really appreciate your time and open for any questions.
Seeing none, I really appreciate everything you do, especially the outreach to our community. And bulky waste day is a big issue for our family, so thank you for all that, as is everybody in this room.
It's very popular.
Very popular, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will now move to community input and announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You're welcome to submit information in writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other councilors to discuss your concerns further. And with that, I'm going to do something different. I'm calling Dana Taylor. Is on Zoom, is she?
I'm not sure. We have Kyle Bunch on Zoom.
Okay, well, let's go to Kyle Bunch on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kyle Bunch, and my address is on file with the speaker card. I come before you, the concerned community member who cares deeply about the integrity and character of this council and the trust our residents place on it. First, I want to express my disappointment in the direction the majority of the council appears to be leaning regarding the appointment of Mr. Sam Skoll. His online conduct demeaning those who disagree with him and engaging in bullying behavior is not befitting of someone seeking to serve in public office. During the last election cycle, he was the only person to be kicked out of one of Wilsonville's online communities because of his behavior. And simply because he scrapped his online presence before seeking this appointment doesn't erase the behavior and the impact it had on others. Mr. Skoll's current role as the planning commissioner brings even greater scrutiny to how he conducts himself publicly. He's already been given the privilege of serving this community in an appointed position, yet his online behavior has not reflected the respect or professionalism expected of someone in that role. And now seeking another appointment to this council raises concerns about accountability, temperament, and judgment. I also urge the council to consider the perception this appointment may create among residents. The potential of appointing someone who is also a significant donor to city members' campaigns invites questions of fairness and transparency. Even if no wrongdoing exists, the appearance of it alone can erode the public's confidence in this process, confidence that this council has a duty to protect. Second, I hope the council will remember the spirit of the council elected by the people who had to step down. Edie Dunwell was known for her empathy, collaboration, and integrity. She led by listening, by seeking understanding, and by uniting rather than dividing. In that same spirit, I want to speak personally about Nicole Hendricks. I had the privilege of working with Nicole during her time on city staff and was continually impressed by her professionalism, kindness, and genuine commitment to serving this community. She leads with humility, respect, and thoughtfulness, qualities that mirror the way Council Dunwell approached leadership. Nicole embodies that same spirit of service and collaboration that our community values. I encourage the council to choose someone who reflects those ideals and will continue to lift the tone of public service in Wilsonville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
There's Abrena, but they're not raising their hand.
Okay.
Mayor O'Neill, city councilors, my name is Randy Wortman. I'm a Wilsonville resident for over 38 years. My address is on file with, with the city. I appear before the city council, I appeared before the city council one year ago on October 21st, 2024, and again on August 4th of this year regarding property on the western border of the city adjacent to the Fox Chase development. I've made one simple, straightforward request of the city that the city council direct the city's code compliance office to determine whether the owner of the property in question is in compliance with Wilsonville City Code 6.220. That would require a yes or no response. I have had no answer from the city, this being my third request now. I rhetorically asked this council, why has the city staff failed to answer this code compliance inquiry? If the answer is yes, the property owner is in full compliance with City Code 6.220, would that not readily resolve the request from one year ago and the follow-up request from August 4th? So it would be reasonable to assume that the answer is that the city, that the city is so very reluctant to provide is that no, the property is not in compliance with city code. Again, why has the city failed to answer this code compliance inquiry? Could there be a conflict of interest? Might the city be favoring a particular property owner? Would such an action be upholding the city council's goals of equity? Would it be an instance of bias or prejudice? Is this a situation where the city considers themselves above the law? After receiving an answer, after receiving an answer, I would be more than happy to meet with city staff to discuss potential options to resolve this issue. I want to bring it to your attention that the city's website advises staff and city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Do you have any response at this time?
Is that the end of your statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Elizabeth Peters is my name, and my information is on file. I am here to speak, well, I, I prepared something, but now I'm going to say something different because Kyle Bunch said a lot of what I was going to say. So I agree with that person who testified, but I want to add a couple of things. Mayor, I really appreciated how you started this presentation in a way that says we embrace our differences, that we don't discount those who are different from us. And I think, I think that's really important. I think if you serve with a public body, it matters how you treat people in person and online, and it especially matters, and it says a lot about a person, how you treat someone you disagree with, because we are all neighbors. The other thing I wanted to just add is it wasn't long ago that this, this mayor asked a member of our city board, a, a city board, to resign after posting that type of content on social media, and so I would ask you to consider that. And words matter. We need a bridge builder on this council, not more division. So I trust that you will look beyond what you see in an application before making your decision. Thank you. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilors, good evening. My name is Doris Whaler, and my address is on my card, but I live in Frog Pond. I read the council's packet, the whole packet for this meeting, and was particularly interested in the replacement applicant for Katie Dunwell. In the initial ranking that we've seen in the packet, Rob Candrian was only received one vote, one councillor's vote, even though he was runner-up for mayor in the last election. This follows a very long-held pattern of our councils never appointing those who ran against them. Candrian has extensive public sector experience, both locally and nationally, has been the chair of our DRB, and is well-known for his nonpartisan approach. The ranking chart showed two applicants preferred by three councillors, Nicole Hendricks and Sam Skoll. I read through their applications carefully to understand their qualifications and their attitudes. Of the two, Nicole Hendricks is the right person for this position, and here is why. When asked how to spend the $6.45 million lease payment expected in 2027, here is what she said, quote, "The I-5 Bloom Bridge Auxiliary Lane project should be explored. You and I know that it's highly unlikely that we're going to have a bridge any time in the next two, next 10 years. Nicole understands that an auxiliary lane would be a huge win for our community." Ms. Hendricks also pointed out that we must coordinate with other cities to push back on unfunded state mandates. These mandates have been a significant drain on our budget, yet we're forced to do them. Before she became chair of our planning commission, Hendricks served on our development review board, and here is one thing she pointed out, quote, "Community members who testify against items that come before the DRB don't realize that our decisions are solely based on clear and objective standards, leaving participants frustrated and feeling like they aren't being heard." This shows her empathy for our residents and a desire to improve the process. These are qualities that our community desperately needs. Our current city council, with the new appointee, will be selecting a new city manager in a few months. Who better to understand all the facets of that job than Hendricks, who currently serves as assistant city manager at Tiger? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just correct the record first. I was the bronze medalist, not second. The second-place person's here, so. Rob Candrian, address is on file. I serve on the DRB as the, the chair of Panel A and aforementioned participate in, participated in last year's mayoral election. So I'm an optimist, but I'm not here tonight to advocate for my own selection to the vacant council position. I am here to argue for a fair, transparent process that will hopefully build trust between the voters in Wilsonville and our local leaders. It's no surprise that we live in an increasingly polarized, divided, and pessimistic community. If I were the way, mayor, and we all know I'm not, I would be working to gain the trust of the entire community, giving people a reason to be optimistic and making sure I did not act in a way that would encourage pessimism or skepticism by doing something which could be perceived as favoring partisan interests and the donors who supported my campaign over the best interests of the city. Before voting tonight, I believe that the council and mayor need to ask one important question, which was overlooked during the application process. Is there a conflict of interest between any applicant and the mayor or council? Let me be clear, I don't just mean from a legal standpoint. The mayor and I both attended law school. We know that sometimes the law allows for something that may not, other people may not categorize as being moral or ethical, so I think it should be looked at also from not just a legal standpoint, but is there a conflict of interest from a moral and ethical standpoint? Giving money directly to a candidate, even when legally disclosed, can easily be perceived as posing a conflict of interest. As I often noted during my quixotic mayoral campaign, accepting campaign contributions at best can create the appearance of impropriety, and at worst, create actual impropriety. It turns out that the consensus candidate to fill this vacancy was also one of the large, if it turns out that the consensus candidate to fill this vacancy was also one of the largest contributors to the mayor's campaign, a skeptic might think that the campaign donation was what tipped the scales in his favor. I don't want to encourage skepticism in our community. I want to encourage optimism. To avoid this appearance of impropriety, I believe the council should be asking if any applicant has contributed financially to the campaign of anyone involved in the selection process. If there is, then to ensure a fair process and deny those skeptics the right to impugn the possible selection of that applicant, those who benefited should do the ethical and morally, morally correct thing and recuse themselves from voting on that applicant. And spoiler alert, the answer is yes, as was earlier mentioned. Sam Skoll was the second-largest individual financial contributor to the mayor's 2024 election campaign. It should also be noted that during the 2024 election campaign, the mayor worked in close coordination with Councilor Shavlin's campaign, including sharing expenses and donating money to each other. Therefore, I would also assume that any money donated by Sam to the mayor also had a positive impact on Councilor Shavlin's campaign. As far as I'm aware, based upon the legal reporting thresholds of Oregon campaign law, no other applicant donated to a campaign. So when the consensus candidate is the only applicant who has donated to people making this decision, it does not help create trust in our leadership, and it creates a conflict of interest. Let's help our community be optimists, not skeptics. And just as I close, just so that no one thinks I'm doing this to further my own personal gain and that you will magically select me, I would like to withdraw my application at this time. I don't want to be someone who's viewed as another polarizing personality in the community. I know some people already feel that way, but that is definitely inadvertent, but I would like you to, I would like to ask that the mayor and the councillor Shavlin recuse themselves from voting on Sam's nomination. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joseph Harris. I reside at 10423 Barber Street. I'm a member of the- I'm a member of the Legends Villavoy HOA, and recently volunteered that I'll be on that HOA. Sam Skoll is the president of our HOA, and I've dealt with him for four years, and I can only speak to my dealings with him in that capacity. He's always been kind, he's always been thoughtful in the way that he speaks, and I'm very happy to have him as our HOA president. He did fail us this year. We will be going up 75 cents for our HOA dues. So Sam, you know, we'll have to talk about that. But I find him to be well-spoken and capable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you. My name is Leonard Dunn. My address is on the card. I don't have a lot to say tonight. I just want to get up and thank the mayor and the members of the council who have been working diligently to make this a warm and accepting community. I do have faith in your all's ability to pick the next council member. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you, and you strike me as a moral group of people, and so I'm comfortable with your decision. I also want to thank the mayor personally. I wanted to get up here at the last meeting, but real life got in the way. Your speech with the other mayors was right on the money. It takes a lot of bravery to get up and voice dissent in a country where being a dissenter is labeled as terrorism. And so thank you. As a combat veteran, as a retired law enforcement officer, I get very, very worried when I see a country that is so willing to start to ignore fundamental rights of habeas corpus, due process, what we would call the right of remedy in this state. I think that as a law enforcement officer, every citizen should be very, very concerned when we have folks purporting to be law enforcement who want to be secret police and won't uncover their faces. There's very few applications in law enforcement where that would be acceptable, and going around and arresting people for civil offenses isn't one of them. When I see people doing that, I know that they're doing that so that they can break the law, so that they can violate people's civil rights, so that they can violate human rights and not be held to account. That's why they do that. And so thank you for being brave. I'd like to give a history lesson to folks that our military cemeteries are full of anti-fascist heroes that died to prevent fascism from coming to our shores, the very fascism we now see in our cities. And I think that we should stop labeling those people terrorists. It's insulting. And I know me and the veterans that I speak for are very insulted by that label. You really should stop. I'd also like to thank the city, the school, the sheriffs for their good response when ICE came to the town. I think that was an appropriate response, and we thank you for your service there. I want to thank my Wilsonville residents who went up to the No Kings. If you look at the numbers, if those are reported right by the Oregonian, that's about 5% to 6% of Wilsonville residents. That's one out of 20 of us that are fed up with this garbage going on in the country. And I think you're going to see those numbers continue to rise. We don't like our rights trampled on, and they're getting trampled on every day. For my fellow veterans, keep in mind that these National Guard people that are being deployed here, they are our brothers and sisters in arms. They do not like being used as political props. Please treat them with respect. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your time and effort that you put in to serving our community. It's very important. My name is Glenn Lancaster. I've been a Wilsonville resident for several years. My information is on file with the speaker card. Some of you may know, I ran for mayor last year. I guess, Rob, that makes me the silver medalist. Thank you very much. But rest assured, I'm not here tonight as a candidate for any post. But I'm here tonight as a neighbor who cares deeply about the city and the city's business. But first, I want to commend you all for strengthening the appointment process itself. The added transparency, structure, and public visibility are genuine improvements that reflect integrity and accountability. That deserves recognition, so I say kudos. Well done. Because of that progress, because that progress is so important, I simply urge that tonight's proceedings continue to uphold that same high standards the public now expects. Open, even-handed, professional from start to finish. The moments like these, in moments like these, perception and process walk hand in hand. When people see fairness at work, confidence grows. The strength of Wilsonville's government has always rested on trust, the belief that decisions are made in the open and for the good of all. Keeping that trust is worth every extra moment of care and clarity you can invest tonight. So whenever this appointment is finalized, I hope we can all look back and say, we did this the right way. Because every fair process today builds the foundation of tomorrow's trust. And what's that, excuse me, and that's what keeps Wilsonville strong. Thank you for listening, and thank you again for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Name is Sam Skoll, and address is on the card. And I would like to introduce myself to the crowd here. I am Sam Skoll. I've not met a lot of you, and so I'd like to talk to you and talk to them at the same time. In regards to the donation and in regards to the Facebook activity, I participated on Facebook. Where the, all the accusations come from, I don't know. I had an engagement with Mr. or councillor Cunningham with it, asked some questions, and when I asked those questions, the site or the group that I was in, I got basically kicked out. So all the other stuff that was going on there, I have no clue where that's coming from or what that's about. In terms of my contribution to the mayor, couldn't volunteer. I just started a business, didn't have time to do that. I thought the best thing to do was to basically invest in his candidacy. It was legal, everybody can do it, anybody can do it, and I did it, and I picked what I thought was the best mayor. And I think he's showing the fact that he's doing a good job. Regarding my candidacy or my application for appointment here, you know, I stand behind my credentials. I've served on the DRB, I've served on two budget committees. I was the chairman one year of the budget committee, and I'm presently part of the planning commission. Those commissions, those committees and everything are one of the greatest things about this city. The process that we go through prepares and makes the recommendations to the council for approval, or not approval, it's up to the council to do so. I stand by my qualifications, both from an educational perspective, from a professional perspective, and also from a community service perspective. Not only have I volunteered for the city, but I've also volunteered for the Red Cross. I've spent 12 years in the Red Cross, and basically, it's just a voluntary thing to serve the community and serve the people. And so, with all that said, my real focus here is to contribute to the city, do the best job I can with the information provided, work with the teams that I work with, and basically do what I can to make Wilsonville the best place that we can call home. And that's, you know, that's the, I give it all, and I volunteer as much as I can, and I try to do it with integrity, and I look for trust amongst the team members, and that's the best I can do. So, thank you.
Good evening. First of all, Mr. Mayor, going to Washington is the best idea I've heard in about a half a year. I wish you guys well. It's the right step, it's the right thing, and thank you, thank you very much for your leadership. I'm here to talk about Samuel Skoll. I'm not going to denigrate other people, I'm not going to say character assassination people. It's unseemly. We should be here supporting people for what they can do, not this social media problems. Mr. Skoll, he's a scientist, bachelor of science, he's got an MBA in business administration. He's went through the civics academy and the police academy. I didn't even know we had a police academy. Development review board, budget committee, he's on the planning committee, the county budget audit committee. This guy is perfect for this job right now. It's got a vacancy. He can step in, he knows what to do, he knows the players. I think you should give him your support and certainly give him your consideration when you consider who you might vote for. By the way, social media is the greatest danger, democracy besides our president.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Hydeman. My address is on file. We live in Villavoy, near the skate park. I want to echo other speakers, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your remarks at the top of the meeting. All people, all different people contribute to our community, different experiences, different cultures, different languages, different foods, they enrich our community. They're not to be feared, they enrich our community. We need to keep in mind that the 1% of us who are transgender, who are without documents, who are otherwise different, all of that is a distraction from, all that animosity, that fear, that hatred, the calling of terrorism, right? All of that is a distraction. It is intentional to divide us from directing our attention to common causes, like comment, like, do we all have enough health care? Do we have a place to live? Do we have food? Do we have adequate education for all the kids that are here? We need to do what we can, and I think some of the speakers have echoed this, we need to do what we can to make sure that the vitriol delivered to us, directed at all of us from the White House, doesn't affect us here in Wilsonville, that we can continue to talk to one another as human beings, that we can, as Doris said, I think, earlier, celebrate diversity of opinion, right? We have to be able to listen to one another and learn from one another, despite the rhetoric coming from the White House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I wanted to thank you for choosing such a transparent appointment process for the current city council vacancy. At a time when trust in American political institutions is at an all-time low, I am proud to have city leaders who embrace a fair, transparent, and democratic process. I consider myself politically engaged. I enjoy attending city council meetings with my family. I volunteer, and I attend many of the community events our city hosts. I am genuinely impressed by how many individuals applied for the vacant position. Despite my own civic involvement, it was a joy to see so many applications from volunteers, board members, and neighbors I have yet to meet. It is a true display to our community's engagement to the civic process that we enjoy such a depth of civic service to the benefit of our community. I like reviewing your packets, and so I did that before tonight. And in my review of all the applications, I support Samuel Skoll for the vacant position. I myself have never met Mr. Skoll, but I found myself impressed by his application. As a nurse, the health and safety of our community is of the utmost importance to me. Our city exists with the persistent risk of a cascade event, and I believe having an individual with experience in disaster response and familiarized with disaster shelters and supply chain management will provide the public safety expertise our community needs should disaster strike. As a proud member of the working class, it was particularly meaningful to me that Mr. Skoll voiced his respect for human capital. Our city is filled with amenities and services because working people in our community and neighboring communities provide it. I am excited to have a leader who prioritizes investment and respect for the very working people who do this good work. Lastly, Mr. Skoll's application demonstrates his years-long commitment to our community. Through time on the planning commission, development review board, budget committee, attendance of Wilsonville's Leadership Academy, serving on his HOA board and other local volunteerism, his commitment to our community is undeniable. I am confident in his ability to serve our community as a councillor and leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cornelia Gibson. My address is on file. I'm a resident of Wilsonville for past 30-some years, and I have been absent from Wilsonville and traveling for some time, so I'm kind of out of the loop of what's been going on. But I did attend last Saturday's No Kings rally, and I was very, very impressed tonight by your opening statements. I was at the No Kings rally, and the spirit of people was just amazing. But one of the people that I encountered was a middle-aged Hispanic woman. She's very, she carried a very small sign, it was very inconspicuous, and it said, no human life is illegal. And that really, it hit me in the heart, because it is so true, and we are so, I'm so glad that what you presented tonight to make us feel that we are all human beings and we have to stand up for each other, and I'm proud, I'm really proud of this council and of you, Mayor, that we are a city that incorporates everybody, that tries to be open, and that protects our weakest. So thank you very much.
Do we have anybody?
We have a Brenna, but not these.
Okay. All right, that appears to be all the comments this evening. Now let's turn to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. First, council president Barry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody for all their comments, taking their time to come to the city council meetings. I'm always impressed that we have a good turnout and that people are voicing their opinions, and I hope they're feeling listened to by the council and by the other participants in the audience. I just really appreciate that. Let's see, so on Wednesday, October 15th, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee Meeting, and in that meeting, there were two main topics that were discussed. The metro regional housing strategy that was working to bring innovative approaches to housing production, preserve our affordable housing that we already have, and proposed creating a regional land bank, which that idea was very well-received, and considering a possible regional affordable housing ban. That what began as over 100 recommendation is now being whittled down to about 16 ideas or recommendations that align with Metro's role and have a reasonable cost to achieve. The other key topic that was discussed was the metro cooling corridors study. This study is looking at the hottest areas in our region and what we can do to protect our public health and provide environmental benefits during the heat waves. Metro's prepared a map-based analysis to identify the priority areas and part of this, as part of the area... this, as part of the area that was identified was an area of Wilsonville, generally from the old town area north into the industrial lands. The report included nine recommendations pertaining to planning, public communications, coordination with local governments and nonprofits, home weather station, and increased access to parks and trees. We had an extensive discussion about ways to improve tree canopy and ways to support the homeless individuals during the highly vulnerable, who are highly vulnerable during the heat waves. So, other topics that I want to highlight tonight are events and activities that are occurring in Wilsonville. Last Saturday was the Fall Harvest Festival, which had many kids and families in attendance. We want to give thank you to the Niklos Family Insurance Agency and Wilsonville Orthodontics for sponsoring that event. We'd like to note that the 2026 Civics Academy is already full, so we want to say thank you to everybody who's applied. Congratulations to those who will be participating. If you have an interest and you'd like to add your name to the waitlist, we encourage you to email Kaylee Edwards at the City of Wilsonville. Her email is kayedwards@wilsonvilleoregon.gov, and I'll just indicate that you're interested in being on the waitlist for the 2027 Civics Academy. As mentioned earlier in our meeting tonight, Saturday, the 25th, is Bulky Waste Day. Wilsonville residents get to drop off eligible items between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM at Republic Service Transfer Station, which is located at 10295 Southwest Ritter Road. Of course, we want to thank you to Republic Services, who are partnering with the city to provide this free service. If you're participating, bring your ID that shows you're a Wilsonville residence, your driver's license, or your utility bill would suffice. And it is a free event, but we're encouraging those who participate to bring cash or check donation to help support the great work of the Wilsonville Community Sharing. If you have questions, please call the Republic Services. Their telephone number is 503-682-3900. And then, a reminder that because Ritter Road closure at 95th Avenue, participants must access the transfer station from the west via Garden Acres Road, Clutters Road, or Peters Road, and there'll be flaggers there to assist the drivers. A big thanks to the Wilsonville Rotary Volunteers, who are once again volunteering to pick up bulky items from seniors or those with disabilities and those that would otherwise be unable to participate. If you, if you're interested in getting help with that, please contact the Rotary. Another event that's coming up on Thursday, October 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, in the Library Oak Room, is a community conversation on the housing cost burden, especially for those who are renters in Wilsonville. There'll be light refreshments, including Halloween candy. There'll be a Spanish-language interpreter to help if anybody needs language assistance. They'll be able to learn about the Wilsonville Community Sharing Program and also how to apply for living in our new affordable housing development at the Wilsonville Transit Center. And, let's see. Then finally, there's a couple activities going on at the library for Halloween. There'll be the Evening of Murder Mystery to test your detective skills and a Spook Fest with crafts and activities. So, check the, go onsite for the City of Wilsonville and scroll to the library, and you'll find more information on those events. Saturday, November 1st, is also the Dia de los Mertos, the Day of the Dead, which is a Mexican holiday, where families welcome back the souls of their deceased relatives for a brief reunion, which is food, drink, and celebration. The Wilsonville Library will be having a traditional Dia de los Mertos altar. It's called Dia de la Frontera, and it's going to be displayed through the end of October. So, if you want more information on that, please go to the Wilsonville Library circulation desk. And that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. On Wednesday, October 8th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium meeting, and over the last couple of weeks, I've met up with several of the applicants for this position. It's been good to sit down and have a cup of coffee with some folks that I haven't had a chance to meet or get to know before, so it was a rewarding experience with that. You know, I'd like to quickly touch on the No Kings Rally on Saturday. I'd just like to say that I appreciate that everyone was able to come out and express their First Amendment rights and go out there and protest peacefully, and that it was peaceful and, you know, everyone got an opportunity to have their voice heard. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity that everyone had there. Finally, the last two Wilsonville football home games are coming up, this Friday and next Friday. Unfortunately, next Friday's on Halloween, but that's just the way Fridays roll this year, I guess. I do know that there has been some folks who have graciously stayed over on their first shift on the grill this season to help with the halftime and finish the halftime rush, and so they can always use more folks out there. The Wilsonville Boosters Club is always happy to have the extra help. Go out there, flip burgers, say hi to your neighbors. It's a good time. If anybody's interested in that, I can pass along the contact information for the Wilsonville Boosters Club, but they'd be happy for the help. I can tell you the guys that, so. But I'll keep it brief, and that's all I got this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Chevlin.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. I want to particularly thank you for your opening comments for tonight's meeting in regards to helping us know and understand that Wilsonville is a city of belonging, and also thank you to Ms. Bashirz, who translated and spoke so beautifully in her native language. It was heartfelt, and I appreciate that. I've been traveling the last two weeks out of state, but I've been staying engaged and, of course, enjoyed reading the applications for all of those that were interested, are interested in the vacant position on city council. I was pleased that it was as rich as it was with so many, many people that have made strong contributions to our city, and I know we'll be talking about that more. The other thing that I took part in, though, while on vacation, was a Zoom meeting with the French Prairie Forum. I'll just remind council and those present that this is a smaller group that, of city representatives from Wilsonville and south, so that incorporates cities such as Aurora and Canby, Donald, excuse me, Donald and Hubbard, and elected officials and other city employees join in on that meeting once a month, 10 times a year. This time, I was pleased that our city attorney, Amanda Guile-Hinman, was asked to make a presentation on homelessness and our city work toward abandoned vehicles and RVs, as well as there was another presenter from the League of Oregon Cities. But Ms. Guile-Hinman did an excellent job representing and explaining the work that our city has done, not only for the homeless, but the work that we're continuing to work on right now for the abandoned vehicles and for the RV parking. So, that was very well-received by those in attendance, with a mayor of Aurora was there, as well as some city employees of Canby. So, thank you very much, Ms. Guile-Hinman, for that, and I was happy to take part. In the interest of time, because we've got a lot of other discussion to have, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Minutes of the September 15, 2025, September 25, 2025, and October 6, 2025, city council meetings. Resolution Number 3221, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute master goods and services contracts for OnCall Arbor Services. Resolution Number 3222, resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to Development Agreement with Venture Properties, Inc., regarding funding the construction of the Beckman Creek Trailhead Park in the Frog Ponters subdivision.
Thank you. Council President Berry can have a motion to approve, excuse me, approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes for zero. There is no new business tonight, so we're going to go to continuing business and deal directly with the city council vacancy. Before we move forward, on behalf of the entire council, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to each of the seven individuals who stepped forward and applied to serve on the Wilsonville City Council. There are Adrian Skirtsmeyer, Alice Galloway, Kristi Korno, Nicole Hendricks, Patrick Tom, Robert Candrian, and Sam Skoll. Your willingness to offer your time, talent, and perspective reflects the strength and civic spirit of this community. I also want to thank each of you for taking the time to meet with me. I met with all of them, and also to the extent you met with other councilors as part of this process. While the council can only appoint one person to fill this vacancy, your engagement and thoughtfulness enriched the process and spoke to the depth of leadership in Wilsonville. I hope each of you will continue to stay engaged through our boards and commissions and other community initiatives. Wilsonville is stronger because of people like you. With that, based on the results of the Survey Monkey Rankings and the strong consensus among council members, Sam Skoll has emerged as a preferred candidate to fill the vacancy. I will now entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Sam Skoll to the Wilsonville City Council seat previously held by Katie Dunwell.
I move to nominate Samuel Skoll to fill the city council vacancy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to approve the appointment of Sam Skoll to the Wilsonville City Council seat previously held by Katie Dunwell has been made by Council President Berry and seconded by Counselor Chevlin. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, it might be a moot point, but we had committed as individual council members to share, if we had met with any of the individual applicants during the period of time until the survey was done. Is that still something that a council wants to hear about?
Actually, thank you, Counselor Chevlin, for bringing that up. For my part, I'll just share to get me out of the way, is I, my additional questionnaire that's reflected in the packet from me was the extent of the communications I had with people in person. I spent a lot of time in person with them, particularly Mr. Skoll, also just getting to know them and establishing that relationship, but not the details as set forth in responses to the questionnaire I circulated.
Okay. Well, I'd also just like to share, because I did make that commitment, that I did have communication with several of the applicants, actually before even the application deadline occurred, and that was with applicant Alice Galloway. Ms. Skirtsmeyer and I exchanged email conversation back and forth about, primarily about the council goals, and I met with applicant Rob Candrian. And then after the application deadline occurred, then I did have a meeting with Mr. Skoll, and that's the extent of my meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chevlin. Council President Berry.
Let's see. I also had telephone conversations with three of the applicants who reached out to me, and that included Adrian Skirtsmeyer, and Sam Skoll, and Rob Carnigan. And basically, those conversations, they were all over the telephone, were just an overview of what the position was and what it's like to be on the city council. I also would like to add just that I'm really pleased that we did have the applicants that threw their name into the hat. I know it takes a lot of time to fill out paperwork and thought of how to present yourself, and I just want everybody to know I really appreciate their time and energy for applying for this position. It's a really important position.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Oh, sorry. Shifted on me. Counselor Cunningham, my apologies.
Yeah, I would disclose that I had meetings with Rob Candrian, Kristi Korno, Nicole Hendricks, Adrian Skirtsmeyer, and Sam Skoll. I also added a short three-question questionnaire into the process, which was reflected in the council packet tonight. And my meetings with those folks in person covered mostly just getting to know them. We didn't really cover direct issues or anything like that, as I said in the last meeting, that I would stay away from. But I appreciate all seven people applying. Technically, eight, one person withdrew. I appreciate them all applying and being willing to be a part of the betterment of our city, and I hope that for those who are, you know, that they continue to find opportunities to engage in our city and in our government.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on the pending motion?
I have another comment.
Council President Berry.
So, I would just like to point out, I think it was mentioned earlier this evening, but, you know, we have a young city council, and we're having some really tenured staff leaving the city, and I think that it's really important that we fill this position with somebody that is knowledgeable about the city, that has participated on different boards, you know, somebody that has volunteered a lot of time. I appreciate Sam's resume. I don't really know him personally at all, but I look at his resume, and I see a really strong business background and a strong volunteer background, and a strong volunteer background here within the city of Wilsonville, which I think are really key criteria that we should pay attention to.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Counselor Cunningham.
So, to make sure that we give this appointment the time and focus that it requires and that it deserves, there was some comments made during public comment earlier that I don't think that we should gloss over, and we should just continue on without investigating them to some degree. There was questions about certain conduct on Facebook. I was sent and shown some of these examples, which then prompted me to go and do some looking and digging and investigating myself. What I found was a pattern of behavior where Mr. Skoll would use the laughy emoji reaction on people's posts, not because they were making a joke, not because they were trying to be humorous, but when people in our community were sharing their opinions and their issues about things pertaining to our city, and people sharing their opinions about candidates running for office in our city, candidates including Glenn Lancaster, who could have been duly-elected mayor and would then have been somebody who Sam would have to work with. That raises a question for me. If you're willing to go on someone's campaign post, you know, and it was pretty vanilla posts, it was, you know, one of these, one of these, you know, lame campaign posts that we throw out there that says, you know, Glenn Lancaster will be great for Wilsonville because he lives in Wilsonville, and one reacted... he lives in Wilsonville, and one reaction, and there's a laughy emoji. That to me, makes me pause and think, does this, is this person ready to reach across the aisle and work with the other side? Are they ready to work with someone who they disagree with? There was another post that, it was in regards to a red light camera post, somebody putting out their personal view on whether there should be a red light camera in the community, or whether we should be doing something with Town Center, and if there was too many apartments, and if we're spending too much money on it, or traffic woes, or criticism of candidate forums. There was, there was numerous examples of this, and after read, after seeing these and seeing the reaction to people's legitimate issues, their concerns, their wants, their desires in our community, I went back and I read through Mr. Skoll's packet all over again, and I pulled two pages of quotes that said things like, "Open, honest communication builds trust that brings our community together. While my years of civic and volunteer service have grounded me in the realities of community needs and values, I know how important it is to communicate openly." The issue for me, I'm fine with disagreement, I'm fine with people not liking a certain candidate, I'm fine with people disagreeing that we should have a red light camera or have one, or that we should be spending money in Town Center or not, but I think that somebody who has been put in a seat of public trust, as a planning commissioner, and on DRB before that, and other boards before that, there's a public trust there to go out and communicate openly and honestly and respectfully with the community while you're in that public And that behavior, to me, felt like it was disenfranchising members of our community who were sharing their opinions. For me, that's an issue, and it is unique to one out of the seven candidates. I don't know that it builds the public trust. In addition to that, there was comments about campaign donations. And I'll say right now, all of this is protected First Amendment activity, 100%. However, there is a level of public trust when you're placed in a seat. That trust is being asked of us once more to place Mr. Skoll into a higher seat, a seat that most people run a political campaign for and go out and garner votes, and if the community likes him, the community selects him, and if the community disagrees with them, they do not select them. And given this pattern, given the questions that have been raised, I think that if Mr. Skoll wants to serve on council, and given the uniqueness of this compared to the six other candidates, I think that Mr. Skoll should run for a seat in 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Counselor Chevlin?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor. I appreciate the concerns that were brought forward about Mr. Skoll. I just believe there's a lesson here for all of us, and it was mentioned by one of our citizens during the public comment period about social media. It's why I don't use it other than a personal Facebook page that I just share pictures of grandchildren and my dog. Sometimes, you know, I might wax a little bit. I don't even know if I would call it political, but anyhow, it had nothing to do with the city, of course. The lesson here is that whether we post on social media or YouTube pages, or create our own videos, any of those things, the lesson is be careful what you're doing, because it's going to come back and you're going to be scrutinized for it. That's very important, and I take that. I take that feedback from our citizens today, and I take that, the activity that people would take part in, activities when they are representing our city, whether elected or appointed. We need to be very careful with what we do, because we are scrutinized at a higher level, and so what we do in the past can very easily come back to shed light upon our behavior, that perhaps it's behavior that maybe that's not who we are now, and yet that's what the public sees. So that's a lesson I think we all need to take with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add that I have worked with Sam Skoll, with Senator Aaron Woods, when he was on the DRB. He's probably the most experienced person that I know in this community, that has served with distinction and honor to this community. After that, he transferred on to the Budget Committee, and then after my six-year term on DRB, I was appointed to go on the Budget Committee, and I was asked to become chair by the then-mayor, and I deferred, because I was well aware of Sam Skoll's ability to communicate thoughtfully, completely, transparently, and actually analyze the issues for our community. I have never seen anyone as committed to making a fair, correct, thoughtful decision, and that's not taking away from any of the other seven applicants. I will be frank, it is tough, but suggesting the emoji comment triggers the concern that I was so detested about of Mr. Kirk and the comment that was made about someone's assassination. There's no comparison. This, we can't, we all should probably get off social media for grading emoji signs. So I just, that just, while I respect people have opinions, I don't, I really have a hard time digesting criticism of someone that has devoted so many years to this community. So in my view, he is the right choice for our council, based on the need that once whoever we vote in on council tonight, this will be the newest council in the history of this city, the history of the city, and picking the city manager, dealing with the Town Center communication process, dealing with all the important issues that face our community, especially in the next budget cycle, it's critical that Mr. Skoll's experience is on council. So that's my two cents. With that, oh, Mr. Counselor Cunningham, do you want to have another say?
I'll just add that for the record, I've submitted that material to City Recorder Kim Belice to add to the official record.
Okay, was that?
If any councilors would like a copy of it, I'm sure she can send you a copy now if you'd like to review that material.
When was that provided?
Just now. I'll, it was something that I, that I, if it needed to come up, it would come up. We've moved directly into this motion, so it has now come up, and because I'm speaking to it, which I wasn't necessarily going to, but because we are in this motion, because it went right to this motion, there was no other conversation that led to this, therefore I've submitted it in this moment.
Is there any further discussion by any of the councilors? Okay, there's been a motion that's been made, seconded. All those in favor of Mr. Sam Skoll being the next counselor and appointed to fill the remaining term of Counselor Katie Dunwell, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose?
No.
Okay. The motion passes, three in favor, one against. Moving on, is there any city manager business?
Nothing denied, Your Honor.
Okay. City Attorney Amanda Gilheiman, excuse me, any further?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know that on October 14th, our new peer support specialist started at the City of Wilsonville through the peer company. Her name is Danielle. She's going through her training right now, but soon we'll be out in our community assisting our community members who might be struggling with mental health challenges or substance abuse challenges. So I'm really excited to have her on board. She will be based out of the Wilsonville Community Sharing.
Great, thank you. With that, unless there's anything else, City Council meeting is adjourned at 8:41 p.m.